Okay, we're going to begin our committee, the whole meeting. It's a couple of minutes after seven. If you want to do some public input, fill out one of the orange cards and give it to the Madam Clerk. Okay, let me go through, give me a few minute, a minute here to sort this out. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? It was pointed out that we have guests for Resolution Number 16, Item Number 16, and we might want to move that forward to an earlier position in the discussion. Yeah, after billboards, probably. So does anybody object to that, or shall we move that forward to become Item Number 7.5? 8.5? Okay. 16. Okay. All right, staff report. Is there such? Yes. Madam Mayor.
The Senate Appropriations Committees One and Two held a hearing at the Alina Union today, and the university testified about the potential cuts in the budget of over 30 percent. And then we had four mayors, the mayor of Danville, the mayor of Champaign, me, and the mayor of Rantoul. And we talked about the effect on local governments and also made some suggestions about revenue that the state could have. But it was a very long afternoon. They've got a big problem with the state budget, and I think they're trying to shift a lot of it onto the local governments.
And I'd like to just mention that we had a very successful rededication or dedication event for the Boneyard Creek beautification plan. There was a, that was part of the Boneyard Arts Festival. We had music and performance at the creek, drumming, and it turned out to be a beautiful day for a beautiful event. All right. Any others? Yes. Kelly Murkowski?
I have here the social service funding applications. They are on CD as well as a hard copy of the list of everybody who's applied. So I know that you wanted the list to see if there was anyone that you wanted to have present on the 27th. So if you'd like to take a look. At the very bottom, there's a couple of agencies with stars. They contacted us to say that they missed the deadline and would be submitting tomorrow. So I wanted to let you know that there was a couple of agencies that wanted to tell us about it.
Thank you very much. Anything else? No?
I guess if you want to review this and let us know who you would like to present on the 27th, I can do that. Next week, if you want to look over the next week and let me know, and I can then contact, we can contact the agencies to do presentations if you would like.
Were there any, did we accept new agency requests this year, or did we have a freeze on new additions?
I heard both ways. I think there may have been a few new possible, but I think for the most part, they were agencies who've already applied before.
Yeah, okay. Madam Mayor.
So what it has on the sheet is the amount requested. So is the amount that they're getting this year on the disk on CD? Because that would be good to see, I mean.
What they received last.
What they are asking compared with what they're getting.
Past history.
This may be the only one that's on there, but we can, I'll send out, and we'll send out another one to you with what they received this year. I think just, on that one is just this. I will make sure that we.
I mean, that's pretty important to know what we're doing right now.
Okay. We can send that out.
Okay, thank you.
Send it out to you tomorrow, so you'll have that to review.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Would there be any other people with a staff report? We have next the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting from March 23rd, 2000, and it should be 15, I'm sure, although it says 14 here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move approval. Second.
Okay. Bill Brown, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes, except for the date, as they are on the agenda? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are approved. Okay. We've come to the section of the meeting open for public input, and we do have some people who wish to speak at the time of the event and some people who wish to speak before. So I'll just go through the list. It looks like the topic of interest is going to be the same topic for all people. And again, you have maximum of five minutes. Kate Hunter, would you like to come forward? And next will be Jennifer Putman.
You don't want to see those. The readers are back there. Kate Hunter, 510 West Oregon. And I'm speaking against allowing electronic billboards. I sent this text out to all council members earlier today. Sorry, I didn't get it to you before that. And I'll just briefly read through it, and I think we'll be done. First of all, I cited comments made on March 9 by Michael and Elizabeth Pluva. It was right on, and it brought out all the points about visual pollution, light pollution, and some of the public safety issues that are under discussion. I did a little research, and I found that four states have banned these billboards entirely: Vermont, Hawaii, Alaska, Maine. Oregon and Rhode Island have passed a moratorium on any added signs. I found that in Texas, 388 cities, which includes most of the medium and large cities, have ordinances which prohibit electronic billboards. I would say this: By voting against this, the Urbana Council can be a leader rather than a follower. I think there's a trend. I found that in Sweden, they had allowed billboards, but after a study conducted in 2013 was publicized, they have now ordered all billboards, electronic billboards, removed. They're not just grandfathering what was there, they're to go away. Other studies discuss car crashes and driver distraction, that the number of seconds that they're finding that it takes for distraction is very, very small, two or three seconds. A lot of, a high percentage of accidents are found to occur after only a few seconds of distraction. That these billboards are designed for distraction. That's the whole purpose of them, to distract the driver. I find it rather frightening. You also have seen research done, I think about eight years ago, by Gregory Young about energy consumption in these boards. No matter how you look at it, they do use a lot of extra, a lot more energy than a typical static board. They have a lower, shorter life expectancy because of the heat that's generated. That means they're being replaced more often. And then I realized that these billboards are going to be sighted in heat islands in summertime. This is where there's heavy traffic, no trees, pavement, which is all hot, and these give off heat also. So it doesn't make any sense to put another heat-producing element somewhere where it's already miserable on a July day. I feel like if it were to pass, it would be very difficult to rescind it. The commercial interests are pushing, and I don't see that there are very many incentives for Urbana to allow it. There's no tax incentive, and I don't know how anybody could ever prove that a billboard made somebody shop at store X, but that's been also mentioned. And I thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your input.
Questions?
If there's questions, please let me know that you want your attention. Okay, Jenny? Jennifer Putman?
Hi there.
Welcome.
I live at 402 West Delaware in Urbana. Even before the issue of digital advertising came up, I knew that I loved the signs that I see where Kirby becomes Florida, and I know that I'm coming home to Urbana. And it's a beautiful rustic, natural wood-looking sign that welcomes me to Urbana. And I love the signs in downtown Urbana that are interesting-looking, that do not project far out from the building. I'll repeat what I said when I, earlier in the winter, I spoke to the Plan Commission and just explained that I think the city is working at cross purposes, when on one hand, we expend funds to promote the rustic, natural look of Urbana, and now we would be making it easy for someone to bring us what I consider the blight of electronic, the electronic billboard. It's schizophrenic and working at cross purposes. I was touched when I spoke to a body here in early, in the wintertime, that the Adams Outdoor Advertising Company is a good citizen. We read letters of support from organizations like the Developmental Services Center. Other progressive social community-building organizations have praised Adams Outdoor Advertising. They are a good citizen. I appreciate the community-building pro, positive things that they've done in our community, and I expect them to continue to do this, even if we do not have electronic billboards in our city. And I thank them for supporting, fostering, mentoring adult literacy, get out in the forest and love the forest. They support a lot of good things, and they put up signs that I agree with, and I thank Adams for being a good citizen. And thank you all for taking this up.
Okay, thank you. Questions? All right. Dan Zangrell, would you like to come forward?
Dan Zangrell, 702 West Michigan. Going to be fairly brief with my remarks, but in looking at what the city can gain of electronic billboards, it seems that the advertiser who controls the billboards is basically the only one who receives any profit in this, whereas we still, it's still going to cost us in power, power for the community, power for everything else. So the economic incentives behind the billboard don't quite make sense, especially when our town has plenty of different media outlets for advertisement anyway. So in short, I don't see why we need electronic billboards or why we should allow them. Thank you.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, thank you. Okay, Scotty Dossett.
Hello, everyone. Scott Dossett, 51 East High. And as you know, I'm going to speak in opposition to the billboards, but if I can digress personally just a little bit, I wish I could turn around while I say this, but let me tell you what a pleasure it is to be in the presence of another intelligent, astute, and remarkable person with the last name Zangrell in this room. I sat on HPC with his father for many years, and it is so wonderful to see, you know, the cloak of new leadership being slipped. So thank you for, thank you for coming. You don't know me, but maybe.
But now you will.
Yeah, so I've been the Plan Commission, and I think I've spoke to you guys before about the signs, you know, the absurdity of claiming they're not going to distract people from driving when they're essentially designed to distract from driving is sort of my key, sort of, logic point here. The packing of the signs around the Lincoln intersection, you know, just appears to me to be a setup for this. Sure, if we put up seven or eight in one spot, then for sure we can deal out of that into one big digital billboard, a little premeditated, not as if the Outdoor Advertising Association of America would all be involved in that kind of thing. I don't think our town needs this. I don't think we've been a fit from this at all, in spite of what you may be told about amber alerts and the like with the connected social media environment that we're in. I just think it's a bad parlay to take and to try to pull attention away from the roadbed at an intersection where, you know, was it six months ago, we lost a motorcycle rider to a non-stopping car moving eastward? I mean, there's been a death at this intersection, Lincoln and University Avenue. And so I think it's factually, ethically, and kind of morally incumbent upon you, if I can issue that challenge, to say no to this resolution. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Okay. And then the last individual who wanted to speak at this time was Katie Brinkman.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Brinkman. I'm at 702 West Michigan, and I have three very simple reasons for opposing the digital billboards. The first one is, as other people have said, myself as a driver, I find them very distracting. I see them as an attractive nuisance. The second reason is I don't see that it benefits the city at all. And thirdly, I feel that it is aesthetically very displeasing. I like that Urbana is a tree city, and I don't want it to become something like New York City or Las Vegas. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, unless there's anybody else who wanted to come before the City Council at this time, we have several people who wish to speak at the time this topic is coming up. All right. We're going to then begin with the items on the agenda, including ordinance Number 2015-04-033, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. This has to do with your 2014-15 Arbor Program. And I see Mike Bronk, our arborist.
What this ordinance is about is I acquired two more sponsors for Under the Canopy publication. They came in, and it was Ameren Illinois and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources' Urban and Community Forestry Division. So they have provided a combined $17,000 to be recognized as sponsors on the back of our new Under the Canopy publication. I put some in the back. And we would like to use that money for development of how-to information for our website, which may include how-to video shorts, such as how to plant a tree, how to prune a tree. We're studying that right now, what they may be, but a series of those for our city website.
Okay. And so, well, all right, Diane Merlin.
I move that we send ordinance Number 2015-04-033 to council with the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Other discussion about this topic? Yes, Michael.
So what's the amount that we would be getting from the state?
With this, the Urban and Community Forest Division is $9,500.
Do you have any idea what the, what the total allocation is of state funds statewide is for this program?
For the Urban and Community Forestry Program?
Yeah.
I think they've, it's, they have a grant coming out here that is due at the end of May, I believe, for urban and community forestry, and I can't remember the total amount, but each community has a maximum amount that they can apply for of $25,000, $12,500. It's a matching grant, so it'd be a total project cost of $25,000, $25,000. So I do know that. And that should be, that's out this year.
Yeah. Well.
And that's a federal, that's a federal grant that's been passed through the state.
Even better. Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate the work you do, I really do. I just, I can't let this go without commenting that in times like this, I just, I find programs like this to be something that ought to probably be deferred until better economic times. I'm not going to object to it because it's frankly pointless to object to a federal fund being filtered down through the state, then being allocated to a local government program. But it, to me, it's just, it's one of these things that we ought to probably think twice about. We're all federal taxpayers, we're all state taxpayers, we're all local taxpayers, and we have a serious problem in this country economically. And there are some, some programs that, to me, don't rise to the level of necessity. And unfortunately, I think this is one of them, but I just wanted to make that comment, and I'm not going to stand in the way of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Others? Mayor Pressing?
Yeah, I would like to point out that one of the basic things that we can do is plant trees. That benefits the whole society in terms of climate, preventing more climate change, and then having a more pleasant environment for people to live in. So I think trees are kind of underrated, but I know that that's the, one of the simplest, best things that we can do, and the least expensive things that we can do to make the world better.
Bill Brown.
Yeah, I'd also point out that Under the Canopy publication talks a lot about what kind of trees to plant, and Ameren's has helped support it because they want you to plant the right trees under their power lines. And if you plant the wrong tree, it can easily cost more than $10,000. So there is a financial return.
Interestingly, I, okay, Diane Merlin.
And there is an economic value to the trees themselves in terms of adding to property value and to the quality of life that people talk about here in Urbana, so, and the fact that, is it nine to one, the ratio of private trees? Ten to one?
Ten to one.
Ten to one. So there's a lot of trees on private property that we need to be caring for, so I think this is money well spent.
I had the opportunity to go down and observe a charrette by the Landscape Architecture Department a week ago, and it was interesting to see aerial, aerial pictures of Champaign-Urbana and how many more trees carpeted the landscape in Urbana than Champaign. It was about like a third, a third more density of trees. It was very interesting to watch from, from a high perspective of an aerial photography. You never think about it because you think trees are everywhere in the city. All right. Having said all that, those in favor of this, moving this forward to the City Council with approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. Next is Resolution 2015-04-020R, Resolution to amend Section 6 of Resolution of a previous Resolution Number 2014-01-002R to extend the preliminary report deadline to June 30th. And this is what option? Okay, Mr. Trent, yes. Or Mayor Pressing?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you there. This is to extend the iDOT transportation study.
That's it.
We corrected it on the web, but it didn't, these were already done, so I didn't ask him to redo it.
Okay, so do we have a?
Todd will tell you more.
A number correction? Okay. Chad Rentsch?
Yeah, so basically, this is just a request to amend the resolution to extend the deadline for the preliminary report for the iDOT Traffic Data Task Force. At this point, the task force has been meeting since June. Initially, I think it was appointed in April. It took a while to do the scheduling for the first meeting. Since that June meeting, we've been meeting every month, and also the subcommittees meet at least once a month and quite frequently, much more than a month, or much, much more frequently than, than once a month. I think we're making very good progress. I think at this point, it's realistic to look at June 30th as a, as a deadline for the preliminary report. I will also mention, we had submitted by the Statistical Subcommittee a 60-page statistical report in, I think it was March 18th. And so we're making good progress. I'd invite everyone to go on the website and take a look at it. It's a very good report. It's a draft, but it's, it's a good contribution to what they're doing.
Okay, sounds like good work. Charlie Smythe.
Move to sentence, Council with the recommendation for approval.
My second.
Okay. Motion by Charlie, seconded by Bill Brown. Any other discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That's done. Thank you. Please talk. Okay. Next is ordinance Number 2015-03-021, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 14, establishing a license for digital outdoor advertising sign structures. I see Jeff Fengstrom for the Community Development Department coming forward.
All right, thank you. At the March 9th Committee meeting, we discussed this ordinance and the next one on the agenda as well, to amend the zoning ordinance to allow digital billboards. And council had some questions at that time. We've taken some time to research answers for you, and I'll just give you a quick update on those. There was a question about lighting levels and if reducing the proposed level from .3 to .25 foot candles would work. Other cities have done that, and Adams Outdoor Advertising believes that would be fine. So staff has made that change in the ordinance we've handed out tonight. There was a question about the required buffer from existing residential districts and if that should include the R4 medium-density multifamily district. The existing zoning ordinance requires a 300-foot buffer from all billboards between them and single-family zoning districts and single and two-family zoning districts. So we've done a little analysis of what it would look like to add the R4 district to that 300-foot buffer. And if you turn to your exhibit or look at the screen here, the blue areas are areas where digital billboards, or I'm sorry, where all billboards are allowed currently. Pink areas, or light purple areas, are where digital billboards would not be allowed should that R4 district be added to the list of buffers. So you can see, it takes out a bit of, a chunk of corridor along East University, Cunningham Avenue, and North Lincoln. And of note, it takes, it would take out two existing conforming structures, one on North Lincoln and one on East University, which if you adopted that R4 buffer, would no longer be allowed to convert to digital. There was a question about, so that change was not in the ordinance that was handed out tonight. There was a question about the hours of operation. Would it be possible to prohibit billboards from, digital billboards from operating between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM instead of 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM? That's possible. Adams Outdoor Advertising has raised an objection to that. So that would be, if you wish to do so, you would need to make that change on the floor tonight. Then there was a question about the number of billboards in Urbana. How do we compare to other similar-sized cities? We did some research. We did some research. It's hard to find out how many billboards there are in a city, but fortunately, Adams was able to help us with that research. They gave us numbers for some comparable markets. Let me pull up that table. And there was one mistake in this table. The City of Champaign actually has 188 billboard faces, not 232. That 232 is counting all of their digital billboards as eight instead of just one. So in comparison to other cities, Urbana is fairly low in terms of density of billboards per residence. We have 1.73 billboards for every thousand residents. Champaign has 2.25. East Peoria has 2.17. Portage, Michigan has a less, a lesser number, 105, 1.05. Battle Creek, Michigan, has a higher number, 3.95. And this is a really small sample, but this is really all we were able to get. And I should also note, Adams is not the only operator in these other cities outside of Champaign-Urbana, so these numbers are actually lower than what's, what's the reality on the ground.
Okay, the mayor would have a comment right now?
Yeah. There are communities that don't have any billboards, and there are communities in Illinois that don't have any billboards, so this is little, little misleading because it only lists ones that have billboards. I went to Chapel Hill, North Carolina last year, and it was a beautiful drive from the airport to the city, not a single billboard. So there are a lot of cities like that.
That's possible.
That is a good point. I should have raised that. Okay. Moving on to traffic safety, staff, or, I'm sorry, Council had requested some clarification on one of the issues we proposed, which is that digital OASS shall not be placed such that they interfere with motorists' visibility of traffic signals as determined by the city engineer. This requirement is really something novel. We haven't seen it in other communities, so we don't really have a lot of sample language to go off of. But I did speak with the city engineer, and we have modified it in the text that was passed out. We've added a sentence to state, "The applicant shall provide evidence demonstrating compliance with this requirement in the form of technical drawings and/or engineering reports as may be required by the city engineer." So staff feels confident that with this requirement in the ordinance, we can make sure that billboards, digital billboards near intersections are placed safely. And just to go through a quick example, here is the corner of Lincoln and University Avenue, which has been a topic of discussion. So this is what a driver sees traveling northwards and in the westbound turn lane, approaching that intersection from the south. You can see there's, there's six billboards within view here, and the first one to the left is immediately behind a traffic signal.
Quick question, Jeff?
Sure.
Go ahead. So in this, in this photo, there are four green lights, so are three out of the four not obstructed by the digital billboard?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. So if a digital billboard were to be placed on this first spot to the left, it could possibly obstruct the view of that light.
And Jeff, can I ask a question? Is the, the light that's mounted on a post rather than on the overhang bar, is that intended to be directed specifically for a left-turn lane use?
It's one of the two left-turn arrow lights.
Are there two required at this location?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't answer that.
Thank you.
So that was just a, a quick overview of an example. There was another question about hold times for images near intersections. Would it be prudent to allow for shorter hold times in straightaways and have longer hold times near intersections? So in the ordinance we handed out tonight, we did have some language to allow for different hold times near intersections, but we didn't change any of the times. They're both still say 90 seconds for both near intersections and in the straightaways. So it would be up to Council to change those if they so wish. There was a question about special use permits. The city engineer, I'm sorry, the city attorney did some research. It could possibly be allowed to require a special use permit for every digital billboard. Staff is recommending against that at this time, a couple of reasons. The history of litigation with the City of Urbana and outdoor advertising companies. We had previously sought to implement a requirement for a special use permit, and that had ended up in some litigation until we took that requ, that requirement out of our ordinance. Additionally, that would require a change to Article 7 of the zoning ordinance, which has not been advertised and gone through the public hearing process.
Could I ask a question about that, Jeff? So that, if there was a special use permit, that would require the Plan Commission to review it?
Correct.
Okay. However, number five says that the city engineer would be recommending that these OASS billboards be evaluated by a case-by-case basis. Is that considered also kind of a unique review? I don't see how they're, the two of them are...
Okay. I'm sorry, number five?
Yeah. The fifth, traffic safety issues. So, so staff's recommending, or it's possible that the city engineer, you're actually recommending that, that there be a review of these. Would it be more appropriate to have the Planning Commission do the review, or you think a city engineer is an adequate agent?
Yes, we're asking for a, a technical review by the city engineer. That's what we're proposing. In terms of public service announcements, there was a question whether the city could require advertisers to set aside some space for public service announcements on digital billboards. Again, we recommend against this requirement. It brings up First Amendment issues. But one thing to note is, in our discussions with Adams Outdoor Advertising, they do insert some public service announcements voluntarily in their digital billboards when they have a, when they're not able to sell all eight of those slots in those rotations. And they're here tonight, I'm sure they could address that further. The last issue is identifying specific billboards for swapping. There's a potential to write into the ordinance which billboards would be removed and which would be added if there was an agreement between the city and Adams. That would probably have to, there would have to be some more negotiations in that A quick up...
And Jeff, where would that negotiation take place?
Well...
Or how that, how would that occur?
I think if Council directed us to have that negotiation, we could do it with the mayor's office, or we could do it in closed session. I'm not sure how exactly.
And then, then from the result of that discussion, then we would proceed whether we would approve this ordinance or not?
Yes. So in our discussions with Adams Outdoor Advertising, they had raised a couple objections and changes they had asked for. One issue was for removal and replacement. They don't want to have to do their replacements all at once when they do removals. So staff is now suggesting, there's a change on page two of the ordinance, I have this marked with a star, that when a billboard is removed, in order to facilitate installing a digital billboard, that billboard removed would, that credit for that would be able to be used within two years instead of having to pop up all the new digital billboards And there's a couple other issues which I believe Adams will address when they speak.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you, you were able to, you made the change to the proposed ordinance based on Adams' recommendation for that particular item?
Based on that and looking at other cities, like Champaign, there is no time limit for their exchanges, so we thought two years would be a fair compromise. And I believe there were a couple changes that council members had asked for. One, there's a typo on page two of the ordinance under, where it says paragraph E, the first paragraph, number one, there's a reference to paragraph 9-d-1-11. That should be 9-6 dot D dot 1 dot 11. And one other change, the next paragraph under existing sign removal, it was pointed out that this only requires the removal of the faces of existing billboards, and we should add the words "and structures" to the end of the first sentence so that it reads, "New digital OASS shall only be allowed upon removal of existing OASS display area and
All right, so I guess we have time now for questions for Jeff, and then we're going to go to public input. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I know early on in discussion, I asked about minimum resolution of billboards, and I wonder, I couldn't remember seeing any discussion of that in the Plan Commission. Did they bring that up as far as any, any kind of technical standards as far as minimum resolution or how they have to function, if there's a certain amount of missing pixels or anything like that?
There was some discussion about, Plan Commission had concerns about 3D images and ultra-realistic images, but there was no real technical discussion about a minimum resolution or maximum resolution, and we haven't seen that in any other cities ordinances.
I think Champaign has minimum of 20 millimeters or something like that.
Okay.
Is that something that could be done administratively with the permit process? Would there be, or would it be better to do that in the ordinance?
Well, yeah, that could be administratively, perhaps through the city engineer's review for safety.
Okay. And then the other question I had is concerning future potential zoning map changes, especially with respect to the Kekapu Rail Trail. A lot of that's already owned by the Conservation District, even the park in the city, I think, by Walmart, and it comes into town a ways. So I was wondering if, if we should hurry up, if this passes, should we hurry up and rezone that conservation so that that would affect where they could put their, their billboards, basically, along that corridor? I mean, is that, how, how would that work?
That could be a concern. It's, let me zoom in on this area. So the rail trail comes in here.
Yeah, I think actually the map goes a little bit farther because the city bounds go farther out. Well, no, that's, that's Walmart there, isn't it? Okay.
Yeah. No, that's Tatman Court.
That's Tatman, but it goes out past Walmart.
It goes out further, yep. Okay. So that would be a concern. You could require a buffer between recreational trails, perhaps? We might want to study that more to see what kind of impacts that would have, though.
Okay. I think the, the current buffer is 300 feet from CRE, so it seems like that's going to be CRE eventually, wouldn't, wouldn't you think? I don't know.
Yes, we could request them to make that rezoning since they own it.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Jeff at this time? All right. Well, maybe then go to public input. Probably, might as well start with Kane Kaiser. Why don't you come forward?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kane Kaiser, I'm with Adams Outdoor. We're at 1711 Dobbin's Drive in Champaign. Jeff did a good job of overviewing kind of our conversations over the last week. Just had a couple things that I wanted to hit on here. You know, we, we did agree to, to accept the .25 foot candles. We feel that we can live with that limit, and our signs are definitely capable of maintaining that limit for you. Another thing we brought up, over the $1,500 annual fee, we asked the city to look at having the $1,500 annual fee per location, not per face. Just as an example, if we were to do a, say, a back-to-back digital university in Lincoln, they're already going to be at that sign location and therefore wouldn't need a whole lot of travel or other time to, to measure those, those, the light levels. Also, you know, I guess, a couple of the bigger things we discussed was the, the sign bank. And one thing we would like to request in the sign bank is that we do not have a limit where we make it longer than two years, because when we are looking at installing digital billboards, you know, if we install a couple right off the bat, say, University in Lincoln, we need, we would like to see what development does in order to justify the, the huge capital investment in, in a digital billboard. We want to see kind of how things shape up, traffic patterns change, and things like that, because right off the bat, we're not going to need that much digital advertising. So we would like to be able to, to save that for future use because that intersection alone will, will have a eight sign-face takedown. To get a state permit, all those sign faces would have to come down, so we would have to reconfigure that intersection. We would, so if we did two billboards there, we would still have four credits in the bank, and that's a lot of signs for us. You know, it's, it's property that we would be giving up, and if they expired, they would just kind of disappear. Another thing is, is also the conversion of existing inventory, as long as they're in the proper zoning districts. That way, the sign bank doesn't keep filling up with credits, because if we wanted to convert another sign location, we would have to take down more signs. So that sign bank would just keep filling up and filling up and filling up, and at a point, there does become a point where removing more signs is not economically viable for us, and therefore, the sign removals will, will, will halt. And I know the, the goal of the City of Urbana is to reduce sign limits, and you know, we would just request, in order to get that accomplished, make it easier on us to, to remove and, and replace what we would like in the proper zoning districts.
Are there questions for Kane? Bill Brown?
Yeah, there were some questions brought up by email, and I think earlier Katie brought up the question about power usage on billboards. I think the study she cited was about six years old. Wonder if you could comment on, do you still have billboards that are six years old out there?
We just replaced our oldest one, and coming up within the next year, we'll replace the second. And so all of them are pretty much within the four-year-old time, time limit. The other two are about seven, seven years old.
Do you have an idea how, what, what the power usage has done over the past six years?
On a new unit, we're looking at probably between $100 and $140 a month, power consumption. I can't remember what the kilowatt usage is, but that's what the dollar amount would come out to.
How's that compared to what you used to pay with the older ones?
An older one with two lights, so a 10 by 30, which Urbana has, you know, a few of, we're looking at about $40 a side on that.
No, I don't mean the static ones, I mean the older digital billboards.
I think we were close to $200 on some of the older ones, and then, just, just depending on the size, the... And then, just depending on the size, you know, some of the ones in the bigger cities where they're 14 by 48, you know, you could reach, you know, $500 or so.
Okay, so almost half, it's reduced by almost half, would you say, over the past seven years?
Yes.
The power usage?
And there's no more cooling fans, it's all air-cooled. So there's no noise, they're totally silent. So the heat signature on them is much, much less.
And how about billboard cost? Does that come down too over the past seven years?
It has, it's starting to stabilize a little bit because just technology gets a little better, the LEDs get a little better. So the cost kind of evens out, you know. So you might be paying the same amount two years ago for something that's much better today, but you're still paying the same amount just because of the upgraded technology. So I think we're kind of seeing it kind of bottoming out a little bit from what it used to be.
So some of your first billboards that you installed, seven, how old was your first one?
It's about seven years ago, those were a little over 200,000.
And now they're like 100?
About 125 to 150.
So that's about half, too, okay. And then, so what's the lifetime on a billboard? Seven to 10 years, something like that?
We're looking, hopefully, 10 plus now with the new technology. And then, you know, if anything ever goes wrong, it's all automated. So we get emails letting us know what's going on with the signs. And then we have our, we send all of our crew members to all the manufacturers and they get trained on how to work on them, so our local workers work on them.
And then also, I think when we first started talking about this, it seemed like we were talking about a rotation of four. And then, over the past few months, it seems like we're talking about a rotation of eight at a time. Did that change, or did I remember that wrong?
No, it's always been eight since we've had this discussion. We used to do six, and then the company switched over to eight, I think, four years ago, I would think. I think right when I started this position.
I mean, I've watched them, it looks like there's four, but I think maybe it's the same four companies just with different billboards, or some different selections and.
Yeah, sometimes when it's not, when it's not 100% full, they may get more exposure, depending on how many slots we've filled up.
And then, just one more. When people are driving, I've been paying a lot of attention the past year whenever I went by one of these. And I think I usually see about two ads when I drive by. It takes me about 15, 20 seconds to drive by and I'll see two ads. So when you sell these, you can't claim that, you know, that somebody buys an ad and this eight-rotation is going to meet the eyeballs of all 20,000 people that drive by there during that hour or however, per day, I forget, average daily traffic, yeah, per day. So do they assume that they're going to catch half the people or fourth the people? Is there any kind of rule of thumb that you use on that?
I know that's been changing recently. They've come out with some different numbers, so I can't speak real educated about it. So I don't want to tell you something that I don't understand right now.
Okay.
On how they're switching that up.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Diane Marlin.
Just some questions. If you're looking at a digital billboard versus a standard billboard with the lights shining on it, are the lights on those standard billboards turned off at night, or do they stay on all night?
Just depends on what they're equipped with. We've been slowly moving towards time clocks. A lot of the older signs had the light sensors. So if it was dark, they were going to be on. So now we are turning them off, you know, around midnight, I believe.
Was it?
Midnight for our standard billboards as well.
So it's the midnight to 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
For that, okay. And there's been concern about loss of jobs on, with related to digital. And I know you talked about, how many employees do you have? Where do they live? And will you keep the same number of employees?
Yes, we employ anywhere between 16 and 20 people at any given time. Probably four crew members that do all of our posting. And if anything, they actually, they get more training with the digital billboards because we send them to the facilities and they get technical knowledge on the signs and how they work. And so, you know, there is upkeep and maintenance. So there would be no loss of jobs with digital coming into town.
Okay, and then, can you explain how this sign banking approach works in Champaign?
Yeah, when I, when we select a location that we would like to convert to digital, we have to select an area, there's an area called the Overlay District, which encompasses all of downtown and campus area. And we have to select two sign-faces, they can be from any two signs and of any size. And then we can put up a digital anywhere else in Champaign. Which most signs in Champaign are conforming, so that makes it a little bit easier.
So you have six digital in Champaign now? Which means you've taken down 12 faces in this overlay district so far?
Correct.
Okay. Are you allowed to say how many faces are in the sign bank, or is that proprietary?
There's zero currently.
Zero, oh, okay. And can you speak to the 90-second dwell time that's currently in the ordinance?
Yeah, the way we are set up, it would be like having a static billboard, you know. As Bill said, if he's driving down the street and he sees maybe two advertisements, if you had 90 seconds onto that, that just leaves that many more cars passing that do not see, you know, an extra ad that someone's paying for. So it wouldn't be worth it to the clients or us to install digitals at 90 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Other people at this time? Okay, Bill, do you want to take over for a second? I've got a couple of questions.
Yep.
Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. And we are going to go to public comment here in a minute. People have a lot of interest here in town to remove certain billboards, which are pretty prominent, but they're right in the downtown area. And I guess you could call these choice billboards or target billboards for removal. If we were going to be interested in working with Adams Outdoor and allowing digital billboards to appear, first of all, it looks like from the map, there are certain blue areas that you could put a new billboard up by right without really doing anything new in this community. Is that correct?
No, we'd have to still remove signs to make them conforming. Because there's only three conforming in the whole city.
Okay, so, okay, are you talking about removal of existing billboards? Or I'm just talking about whether you could put up a new billboard? Because these happen to be in the blue zones and there are no billboard buffers that overlap them.
Right, but we would still be running into the 1,000-foot separation between current inventory, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff?
I believe Mr. Roberts is getting at there are certain areas that are not within 1,000 feet of other billboards. So you wouldn't have to take down billboards within 1,000 feet to put up a new billboard there.
Right.
Yeah, there are billboards like along Anthony Drive or at High Cross Road and I-50 and other places in the community.
Yeah. You know, initially for us, you know, we'd be looking at those higher-traffic corridors. So that's, you know, to install, to use the investment to pay for the signs, we really need to look at those higher-traffic corridors.
And if the, so would, to allow billboards to be placed in the city, is Adams willing to take down billboards that the city chooses to target as a removal?
You know, we've been discussing, you know, the University and Lincoln Avenue intersection quite a bit. And I know that a lot of people would like to see some change there. I don't think we would initially want to speak about many more because at that time, we're already taking down eight faces. And, you know, that is quite a bit, you know, for us to take down all at once. Because there are customers that don't use digital that would still love to advertise there on static. So we are, you know, we're kind of playing a game with, you know, what kind of advertisers we're going to have there and gambling a little bit, you know, with the cost, the takedown, and who's going to buy it.
If you take down, you're only required to take down two faces to erect a new digital billboard in the B3 Business District, as I read the ordinance. The city cannot ask you where specifically to remove the two faces. They could be anywhere among the 72 billboards that you own, is that correct?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And then, the city really cannot direct where the new digital billboard might be erected. You might choose to do it near the expressway. You might want to replace a billboard, you know, near the downtown area. It would not be something that the city at this point could direct or choose, is that correct?
Right.
All right, and would Adams be willing to take the direction of the city to remove key billboards which have long been considered a interference in the downtown landscape to have the privilege of putting up digital billboards in Urbana?
I mean, we're always open to having that discussion with the city. We're definitely willing to talk with you about that. You know, just, we've been going off of the discussions we've been having on, you know, what people's views are, especially at the intersection of University and Lincoln, and the amount of sign-face that we would have to take down. We would have to be able to convert another location to make those other credits, you know, worth something without them just going away, you know, just letting that property just disappear.
Right, okay, well, I'm thinking of a digital billboard at the corner of Main Street and Vine, right in the heart of the downtown by the sheriff's office. I wonder if you'd be willing to take that one down in particular?
Currently, they would not want to take that down because that is our most sought-after board in Urbana.
What about the one at University and Cunningham Avenue, at Five Points, which is over the Blockbuster Store?
We have a very short-term lease, so if there was ever any development that would go there, we would be gone anyway.
Okay, and another one that's come up in discussion a lot is on North Broadway, right where the Boneyard Creek Bridge is, as it crosses, the creek crosses Broadway. And that's also right at the very entrance of the Boneyard Beautification Area. People have commented to me that that's a billboard that they would be very willing to see removed. What's the chances of that one being taken down?
Probably a long shot, only because we own a permanent easement there. We own the right to be there for as long as, you know, forever, really. So, you know, when we're looking at digital locations, you know, that wouldn't be one of the areas where we would want to see a digital billboard because the traffic's not high enough. But we do own a permanent easement there, so we wouldn't have to pay anything to be there. You know, we paid upfront to be there forever. And, oh, I'm losing my track on where I'm going with that. So, yeah, I think it would be a long shot to get the company to agree to remove that one.
Okay, and lastly, I'm looking at the trade-off for a sign, a face for a face. You're talking about, you know, how they become part of a banking. I thought that the city had really not pursued a policy of banking billboard signs. I thought we had kind of agreed that we weren't going to be talking about that direction. But if we are, if a face is showing, can show six or eight different advertisements, it would be probably more useful to the city to require such a billboard, like a digital billboard, to be considered to have a replacement ratio of one-to-one face or one-to-one advertisement, since we're talking about static advertisements which don't move. And their equivalent would be advertisements that are from different clients. So would Adams be willing to take down six traditional faces to allow a digital billboard to be placed someplace?
No, they wouldn't.
You're getting six times as much coverage and you're selling six times as much billboard income. But still, you think it would be too much to ask to have a face?
Well, if we're going for one-to-one, then we're getting the same amount of revenue, it's just you're condensing it into one location. So you're not, to invest the money that we're looking at, we need to have a return on our investment. We wouldn't be getting that.
So when you have a digital billboard and you have six clients, you don't make any more money than you would if you just had one client at a static billboard?
Well, six, with six static billboards, we would make the same amount of money as we would with six digital rotations.
Okay, at one, at one location?
Yeah.
Okay, so one, okay, that makes sense. All right, thanks.
Thank you. I return the turn. Okay, and what I'm going to do is I'm just going to pass, there were, I found nine points that were addressed by staff. And I just am going to pass these down to the city council members to look at while we have the discussion. Now we're going to go to.
Can I ask a question, please? Yes. I just wanted, throughout this whole discussion, I want to thank all the citizens who have emailed, called, stopped me, and, you know, held me up for a few minutes to discuss their reasons and everybody that I've met with, the citizens as well as with Adams. Because it introduced me into what it's like to be in this seat. So I did want to just get a few clarifying points. We, if a person comes to you all right now, if a business comes to you, whoever says they want a static billboard at Lincoln and University, how much does that cost?
Oh, it just depends on how many billboards are buying elsewhere. But, I mean, you're looking probably anywhere between $600 and, you know, $1,500, depending on if you're buying one or if you're buying a whole slew of billboards.
Just to make it easy for me, I want one at Lincoln and University.
You'd be closer to $1,500, probably.
Okay, and that's.
For a four-week period.
For four weeks. So if I come back to, if I go to you in Champaign and I want one at one of, a location basically with the same amount of traffic and I want digital, how much does it cost me per month?
About the same.
$1,500.
Okay. Because you're paying for the flexibility and all those things that you can do with it and no production cost and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
The $100 to $140 per month is what? I'm still not clear on who, you all pay that, right?
Yes, yes.
To Amarin, right? Because it seemed to be suggested earlier that somebody else pays it or something.
No, if we install a sign on someone's property, they have no expense whatsoever. We pay for the sign, we pay for everything, we pay for the metered electricity and then we pay the bills every month.
Well, something else I had. No, I think that's it for me, thank you.
We'll have a chance to have a discussion here with him.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's why, thank you, though.
All right, we're going to go to public input, thanks so much.
Thanks, guys.
Our first public input. All right.
Five minutes, okay. I timed it. I'm more nervous now, I'll probably talk faster. Carol Ozgus, 603 East Oregon. I moved to Urbana, back to Urbana after 30 years in California. I went to graduate school here late '70s. And I was so surprised how more and more over time I miss this community. So we sold our house in California at the peak of one of the housing booms. Because of the difference in prices between California and here, we could have bought anything. And we looked at Greencroft, we looked at some of the most expensive houses in the market at the time. And as I explored the area more and more, I fell in love with Urbana. I was looking for a very specific type of community, I was looking for a certain lifestyle, I was looking for a feeling, I was looking for a rhythm. And as I spent more and more time, I decided I knew where I wanted to live. So I got a map, I made a six-block circle around the farmer's market and I only looked in that six blocks. And it took me two years to find my house, but I found the perfect house. We have something special in this town. There's an energy, there's a vitality, there's a quaintness to Urbana. To me, it's always felt like a value-driven community. It's felt very intentional, it's felt conscious. And I also think that we have so much tremendous potential to even come more into what we're sort of destined to be. So from the standpoint of loving this community and living in this community, I am opposed to electronic billboards. I believe that they have the potential to alter the energy, they have the potential to alter the aesthetics, the rhythm, and the values of our city. To me, electronic billboards are almost the antithesis of what this city stands for and what we're trying to get to. I also have a professional objection to electronic billboards. I believe that they could have a negative effect on the mental health of our community. I've been a psychotherapist for over 35 years. It's part of my training and my experience to consider how a person's environment affects them in both obvious and subtle ways. The effect of rampant advertising, inescapable technology, visual clutter, and the constant push towards consumerism cannot be underestimated. All of this creates stress and distraction. All of this creates stress and distraction, and becomes a barrier to a high quality of life. We are already bombarded by technology. We are already drowning in advertisement. It is already difficult to find relief from the overwhelming influences of our culture. Right now, Urbana is a bit of a sanctuary from these things. We have open spaces, parks, prairies, and thoughtful urban planning. I just do not see how electronic billboards fits into the community we are trying to create and maintain here. So I just want to leave you with a few questions. Does our community need more advertising? Do we need more technological distraction? Do we need more encouragement to spend money and increase our consumerism? Do electronic billboards fit with the values and mission of our city? Will electronic billboards improve the quality of our lives? What do we want for our town of Urbana? What do we want it to stand for? What are our values as a community? What kind of environment are we trying to create and maintain for our day-to-day living?
You have one minute, Ms. Osgood.
I'm almost there. How do you want to feel when you cross the boundary line between Champaign and Urbana? And my last question, are you absolutely, positively, beyond a shadow of a doubt sure that opening the door to electronic billboards will not have an unforeseen negative effect on our wonderful city of Urbana? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was the best explanation I've heard yet. We had a speaker at the Park District Dinner last year who talked about the importance of people being connected to nature, and how it affects people's outlook, how it affects them spiritually, emotionally, and I think you really nailed it, so thank you.
You're welcome. I have not. I think we're getting numb to, I mean, it's so, just in every crevice in the air we breathe, you know, to the influence of all this stuff, and we really have to hold tight to our souls, you know, to the souls of our community, and these decisions are important. Hey, you know what? If we become this amazing city, I want to say one more quick thing, I have a feel for real estate. I've made my family a lot of money, because I can feel when a city's, there's potential there. There's something there, it's on the edge of just becoming something fabulous, and that's how I feel about Urbana. And I've felt it since I came here, it's like, wow, this city, it's, there's this percolating, there's this movement, there's this energy, it's becoming something. And I think that if we stay true to what we are and what we can become, we are going to become a city where people are going to want to live, people are going to want to do business, people are going to want to spend their time, but it's going to be from the essence of what we are as a community, not digital billboards, not...
Oh, yeah, my mic's not on. Pardon me, Esther Pat. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Esther Pat, 706 South Coler Avenue. Thanks for this opportunity to address you, and thank you for your service. I mentioned that, like, tonight, when I knew you've already been here since 5:30, so I've spoken before on this topic, I'll be brief. I just want to make three points. One is, and I'm glad Mr. Adams asked the question about the price, if, I know there are some people who feel this is just so important to business, but if businesses will have to pay as much for a message on a digital billboard as they do for a static billboard, I don't see how allowing digitals will improve advertising opportunities for local businesses. My biggest concern is distracted driving. Good for you, Bill, that you were able to not get in an accident while reading two different messages driving. I have trouble finding the time, being able to read even one message if it's more than a few words, without taking my eyes off the road for longer than I think is safe. And to hear the advertising, Adams advertising people saying that being able to read just two billboards messages while you're driving by isn't enough for them, they want it to move faster so you can read more, I mean, how many more distractions do we need on the road? How many more car accidents do we need? I think that's such a mistake. Finally, and actually, that is really is why I feel so strongly about digitals, but why I feel so strongly on this whole issue is, the city of Urbana, for more than 30 years, has had, I mean, it's maybe not an official policy, but has been moving toward the goal of phasing out billboards, that the Constitution and the Supreme Court does not allow you to just ban them, even though at many times in the last 30, 40 years, a majority of council members would have liked to have banned them if we could have. But clearly, that has been the direction the city's been going, and at some point in the last 10 years, when the city council started meeting in to adopt council goals, one of your council goals is to phase out billboards. Allowing digitals is a step in the opposite direction. It's contrary to your council goal, and it won't get you there. It won't get you to phasing out, it will make phasing out even farther in, into the future. I think it's, digital billboards are unnecessary, I don't see a benefit to anyone except the owners of them, and, and not that I begrudge them benefit, but can they please get it someplace else, from someone else and not from our community? And I would like to urge you to stick to the decades-old policy or trend of Urbana City Council to move toward getting rid of billboards to the greatest extent that is allowed by law. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for Esther? All right, one more, Dural Cruz.
Good evening, Dural Cruz, at 2007 South George F. Drive. In the Sunday New York Times, there was a short article on our front page about the house that wouldn't budge in the midst of urban development. Two young children aged eight and 10 asked their parents why they brought them there. They said, "We want to help them understand that modernism is not always the best thing, that playing with the iPad is not always the best thing, that there are values to think about. That is what I would like you to think about tonight. Modernism is not always the best thing, there are values to think about." Adams' request is all about modernism, but modernism is not always the community improvement. In 2014, over $180 billion was spent on all forms of advertising in the United States. Billboards make up a small portion, 4% of these advertising dollars. Advertising is ubiquitous in our culture, on TV, radio, Facebook, newspapers, magazines, mailers. We are even tracked and targeted on the internet. The growth and expansion of advertising seems similar in some ways to society's drug problem, namely the sheer size of dollars involved, how the system is structured, and its effect on us. In this case, Adams is the outside supplier, pushing its product, making a hefty product, and taking it out of our community. The dealers are local property owners who make small profit by allowing Adams to sell this product or the billboards on their property. The dealers line our busiest streets. The addicts are us. We are often unable to see or control the effect of being subjected to its mind-altering and numbing messages. We are told we need bigger, better, fancier, glitzier billboards. Our addiction just grows. In this world, the digital billboard is the new super-drug. Yet I sense a recognition of concerns on the part of the council. You have identified some of the ill effects of digital billboards. Traffic safety concerns, lighting levels, location concerns, lack of financial benefit to city revenue, street scape light, environmental degradation. But what is troubling, it seems you, it seems you think by writing an overly restrictive ordinance, you can resolve these problems. You are trying to make something that is undesirable to many, not really needed by most businesses, provides little financial benefit to the city, and is destructive to our urban landscape, seem reasonable, workable, and palatable, when it's really not. Sadly, would you support a billboard on any busy street in Urbana, such as Windsor and Philo, Lincoln and Springfield? I doubt it. Then why would we support them on any other street? Sadly, and ironically, over time, Cunningham, Lincoln, University have become the streets for static billboards, dozens of them. You can see and feel the effect they have on our senses and the urban landscape. And now you want to add digital billboards to the cocktail. Light, color, multi-messaging, century hyper-stimulus. Who's winning? Who's losing? Who's paying the price? What is the price? Digital billboards are a form of modernism that need to be judged not just by some minimal economic gain for a few, but against our community's basic values and our future quality of life. To vote against this ordinance is not to vote against business. Businesses will continue to have every means available to them to advertise, including static billboards. To vote against this ordinance is to vote for a better, healthier pathway forward for advertising in our community. As the parents caution their children in the opening article, "There are values to think about." There's a clear principle here, no compromise, vote no. And I also, I got a few seconds, or eight seconds? I would like to say one other thing.
Are there questions for Dural? Okay, I've got a question, Daryl.
Yeah.
Could you imagine billboards on North Lincoln, and how would they look up there by Prairie Fruit Farms? A digital billboard, would that be a good location?
Yeah. No, I, I would like the city council to simply look at ways to reduce billboard signage in the city over time. Okay, I think it's an archaic form, way of advertising, that has historical roots, and so, digital billboards certainly is not the way for the city to move forward. And I would like to see static ones reduced over time, possible to.
There's a question, Daryl, about adopting, you know, the technology of today, you know, in the advertising world, and what's wrong with that?
I think, look at the internet, look at how they're tracking you, look how when you're on Facebook, where you shop, they're tracking what you're buying, and you'll get advertisements for it. So technology, in certain ways, is occurring and is happening in all sorts of means of advertising. The question is, is whether you want to use that technology in this particular way to put in our urban landscape, to affect our visual landscape, that affects the appearance and quality of people who move around in our streets. And I don't see that as something that adds to the quality of life for the community as a whole. There are other ways that advances of technology can be used. I mean, there's always pros and cons, you can always find the good and bad. It's a matter of being able to choose when and where and how those technologies are used appropriately to benefit the quality of life and not detract from it.
Okay, thanks. Other, anybody else? Yeah, Michael.
So, Dural, first of all, I find offensive your analogy to the drug culture. I think it is completely offensive. I'll leave that at that. But more importantly, if you want a reduction in sign inventory in the city, how do you see that happening absent affording the company that has a right to have all the signs that they have now, that cannot be diminished by the city? How do you find a pathway toward reducing the inventory other than this?
I haven't, I haven't even looked at the options or possibilities of how...
Because there are none.
That might not, might be done. Well, I don't know.
No.
Okay, well, the question is, is whether you're asking whether reducing the inventory for accepting X number of digital billboards, there is some logic to that, okay? Because you've got less than you had before. The question is, though, as you look down the road in the future, do digital billboards, by their very nature, in terms of technology, do they add or decrease to that visual, environmental landscape, street scape, in a way that's different than static billboards? And I've heard traffic safety concerns, lighting concerns, location concerns, no benefit to the city, environmental, so I don't know that you're gaining anything. You may be losing more than you're gaining by reducing some static signs, by putting up some electronic ones. Because that's what you're talking about, is all the ill effects of digital billboards, not static ones.
Well, those are...
Okay, and those, I'm not sure, you could fool yourself into saying, oh, we can write a real tight ordinance that's going to minimize or eliminate these ill effects. I think you're fooling yourself if you think that can be accomplished.
But the ill effects that you and the other folks who oppose these are perceived and not proven. There are none that are proven. There is no, there is no scientific proof that there is a discernible increase in distraction of drivers. There's none. Point me to one. Point me to one scientific study that shows that. Okay, I'll take that as you don't know any.
Well, I haven't looked, so I'd say...
Well, I would think you, I would think you would look before you would come here and say that that distraction is an issue. And I would think that the other folks here, who are opposed to these, would actually bring some proof. But there is none. So, you know, I just want to point that out.
I would say it's a distraction to me when I see digital billboards and see them flipping when I'm driving.
No, I understand, but you haven't crashed, and neither has anybody else. So, I mean, I guess that's my point.
Great. Okay, thanks, and we're going to have a chance for the council to bring up points here in the future.
Thank you.
This is public input, as received by the Yellow Slips, so I'm going to open it up to conversation here, and I don't know if we should be talking about both ordinances at the same time, or, I mean, I don't know how they're linked, but, anyway, let's open up the conversation. Would anybody make comments, offer suggestions? Okay, Bill Brown.
Okay, I'll start. So, first of all, just, you know, this has been a long process, and it may go on longer, I don't know. But from all the public input, I know there's basically two challenges you guys are probably dealing with, because that's what I've heard most. One is the billboard in front of the Assembly Hall. Every time that people think of digital billboards, that one comes up. Oh, I hate that one, because, you know, it's just, it's the one that everybody talks about the first thing. So I try to make clear to them that that's not what we're talking about. It's not this rotating, exploding thing that looks like, you know, some kind of special effects out of a movie or something. So I'm sure that's one challenge that you're dealing with. If you could, if you could have any influence with the U of I and can have them tone that one down, I'm sure that would help your cause a lot. The second challenge, I think, is that there's no tax on you guys. If you could talk to the legislature and encourage them to tax your billboard at 5%, just like they do gambling, I think we'd be falling over backwards trying to get digital billboards, because nobody seems to care about the social values of gambling, because we get 5% of that. we get 5% of that. So, I want to start out with that. And then, just, I'll start out just kind of philosophically from my point of view. I think that zoning exists to provide as much possible uses in the right places for a variety of uses. And one of those could be digital billboards, if we have the right places where those can go. I think there probably are some places that are appropriate for those, so I will probably support this in some form. I think I wanted to review a little bit, because I heard some confusion, some people that might be confused about where they are currently, would be currently allowed under this ordinance. They wouldn't be allowed anywhere in B4. Is that right, Jeff?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so no place south of University Avenue near downtown. So, any of the ones, like the ones that Dennis mentioned, the two that are most offensive, would never be digital under this ordinance. They just aren't allowed there, and no new billboards of any sort are allowed there currently. So, I wanted to clarify that part. And for any digital billboard that went up, you would have to remove a minimum of two faces. So, even in the blue areas, even where the, they're not within 1,000 feet of anything else. According to the ordinance, if you want to erect a digital billboard, you have to remove faces, and it's a minimum of two. And it would only be two if you removed some of these ones that we're especially anxious to get rid of. If it would be one of the others, it could be three or four faces. So, I wanted to clarify that point. So, the reason I asked about the cost of billboards, how that's come down, and how the energy use has come down. The way I see it is that your investment now is about half as much as it was when you started seven years ago. So, if seven years ago you could make money using the same rotation scheme, basically where I see two ads, and I can identify two ads as I drive by, at double the cost, then it seems like today you should be able to make money if I only see one ad, because your costs are half. So, I won't support the 10-second turnover, because I just don't, I think things have progressed enough technologically and cost-wise, unless you happen to be charging half as much, which I don't think you are, that you should, or a billboard company, I don't want to pick on you, but you happen to be the only one, a billboard company should be able to make money without the 10-second rotation. But I also understand that you have options, and that if you're going to invest your capital someplace that allows a 10-second rotation, then you're more likely to do that. So, by doing that, we might not get the billboards. And I do think that there's important uses for this kind of advertising, because it can be changed quickly. People can advertise specific events, specific times a day. Law enforcement can use it for emergencies, weather emergencies, people emergencies. So, I think there are definitely good uses for this. I also just wanted to mention, I think that, I kind of think your ads about being the original social media, or original tweet or something is kind of cute, but I don't really think of it that way. I think it's unfortunate that that's the market that the digital billboard seems to be competing with, is this media, the social media market, because I've always thought of it as more of the original location-based services, which is another new technology. It's the original place where you can locate, you can advertise close to the business. And there's really no other way, other than outdoor advertising to do that. So, I think by having them in Urbana, it does benefit Urbana, because you're advertising where people are anyway. It doesn't take much effort to go off the course a couple of blocks to visit someplace that's advertising. So, it's the location-based services, in general, that outdoor advertising is good There was probably another point or two, so I'll have to think of those and come back, but that's a start.
Yes. Okay, so, next person. Charlie Smythe.
Bill, could you clarify what you meant by resolution earlier, and where can that be put in here?
I haven't looked close enough to see where it could be put in. It would just be technical specification. Champagne has a minimum resolution of 20 millimeters. That's the distance between pixels. So, that's about two per inch or so. Or, yeah, no, that'd be closer to one per inch. But I think the current standard's probably closer to 16 millimeters. But then there's also, they have some new technologies that don't really use that same pixel pitch, because they offset them and stuff. But maybe we could just direct staff to add a similar resolution requirement as Champagne.
Other comments or questions or discussion? Diane Marlin.
Well, I originally had a lot to say, but I'm going to condense it. I believe that there is a limited role for digital billboards in Urbana. My reasoning is, number one, I would like to see an overall reduction in the number of sign structures, outdoor sign structures in Urbana. Based on our past 40 years of experience, we have 37 outdoor structures now with 72 faces, and there is no way that that will ever change unless the company chooses to remove those faces voluntarily. The city does not have the power to require removal of any billboards. The only way we achieve an overall reduction in the number of outdoor signs is the trade-off with digital. And I've heard, I want to base the decision on fact and not fear. And over the last six months, there's been a lot of, I've heard a lot of fear from people, so I'd like to address that. I want to make it clear to people that our current zoning ordinance, not even considering what we may have meant or add to it tonight, or may not, our current billboard ordinance is extremely restrictive. All the signs that we have in place today were put in before this current version was passed. We have sign limits, we have size limits, we have banned construction of any new billboards in any residential zones. Those three billboards on Philo Road, South Washington Street, would not be allowed under our current ordinance, and could never be converted to digital for that matter. Billboards are prohibited in any historic districts. As mentioned, they're prohibited in the downtown business district, south of University Avenue. There's no billboards allowed on any development that has a TIF development agreement in place. We have banned the clustering of billboards, like we currently have at Lincoln Avenue, where there are eight faces encountering people when you drive through that intersection. And we require a 1,000-foot buffer between billboards. There's also strict design and landscaping standards, and distance requirements for conservation, recreation areas, and that sort of thing. So, there is virtually no chance of a new billboard structure being installed in the city of Urbana, whether it's a standard billboard or not, unless you are removing several other existing signs, just to get those distance requirements. Thirty-four of the 37 structures are non-conforming, legally non-conforming. They were grandfathered in, but they're non-conforming. So, what does this mean? It means we're adding, for the digital, are adding another set of restrictions on top of the very, very tight restrictions that are here. And I do want to emphasize that the State Farm Center sign is not allowed in Urbana. It's university property. They consider themselves a sovereign entity exempt from zoning, as I understand. And it's not an Adams billboard. So, that is not what we're talking about when we talk about these digital billboards. This ordinance has no, allows no animation, no video, no animated transition, no 3D effects, no optical illusions, any technology that gives the appearance of motion or depth. And it incentivizes the removal of clusters of billboards, like we have at Lincoln and University. And it incentivizes the removal of billboards in sensitive areas like downtown Urbana. And when I think about the intersection, I keep coming back to the intersection of University and Lincoln. And that is the gateway to the city of Urbana, the heart of Urbana. It's also the gateway to campus. Thousands of visitors come through that intersection over the course of a year. Just in this month alone, we've had Mom's Day weekend, Ebert Fest, the Illinois Marathon, and graduation. That's the gateway entry to our town. And what do we see when we get to that intersection? It needs, you know, it needs to be upgraded. And one of the things that would improve the appearance is the removal of the eight billboard faces there. If Adams wanted to install one digital face, they would have to remove all eight billboard faces. Most likely, they would put one digital sign back to back. The advantage of having a digital sign there is that it could be a welcome sign to the city of Urbana. We could advertise events on that sign. It could point those thousands of visitors to businesses in downtown Urbana, to services in downtown Urbana. We're also the county seat, and many people are trying to find the federal courthouse, the county courthouse, the county jail, and other services in downtown Urbana. It could advertise the, and businesses that are in downtown Urbana. So, I see a value in having a sign that can be changed up to the minute to reflect what's going on in the city at that location. And I see a value in removing some of the billboard, or all of the static billboard faces at that intersection. The truth of the matter is, we have restricted already, not just with this ordinance, we've already restricted billboard locations to the point where they can only be located on a couple of major arterial corridors in this community. North Lincoln Avenue, north of Bradley, basically, University Avenue, and Cunningham, north of University Avenue. And that's about it. I mean, that is it. So, this new ordinance is simply building on an already very restrictive ordinance in place. And we're not talking about saturating the city with electronic signs. This is not Las Vegas, New York, it's not Beijing. It is, we're talking about two to three digital signs, realistically, in the foreseeable future. And I appreciate the heartfelt concern, and I share the same values as far as aesthetics and quality of life in this city. But I sincerely do not believe that two digital signs is going to degrade the quality of life in this city. And I do think that there are some useful benefits from a couple of digital signs at these strategic locations, particularly our gateway entrance to the city. And we are intentional about what we do here. And this ordinance, and like many, most, well, I'd say all of our ordinances, are intentional and thoughtful. And I think we are all working to maintain the quality of life and aesthetics, and it reflect the values of the community.
Anybody else would like to speak at this time? Charlie?
Yeah, whether you support this or not, I don't think the ordinance itself is ready to go forward. There are issues with the resolution that was raised, some technical things, the recreational trails, I think is really important, that that needs to be nailed down in advance. You know, we talked about having just a few, and even though I don't support the concept of signs in general, and I'll address that in a second, big signs like this. I don't see why, if you only want a handful of them, why a special use wouldn't be appropriate. To me, this is a new situation, a new provision in zoning, as opposed to an old provision in zoning, which was changed to special use from what it, where it was by right before. So, I think there's a very different legal situation here. So, I'd like to know more about special use. I personally don't see a problem with having a buffer to the R4 districts as well. I don't think it makes that big a difference, especially since it doesn't affect where the key high corridor, high-traffic corridor ones are as well. The issue of distracted driving and issues, I think that's, that case is still out. You know, nobody thought that cell phones were a distraction, and yet, little by little, they're being restricted. Not in work zones, not in schools at all, hands-free is now required, and they're still a distraction. Recent, some very recent work shows that six out of 10 accidents, car accidents, are actually related to distracted driving. And so, there's a lot more work in that area to be done. So, I think that is a serious concern for me. You know, the energy issue still shows itself here. The energy costs are three times what a current regular static billboard is. Now, maybe that'll change with technology, but that's still a lot of, a lot more energy use that we probably shouldn't be using. The, I don't see Adams being willing to do some good trade-offs either. Maybe we really do need to sit down at a negotiating table. You know, the two signs that are probably the most problematic are two that they've rejected already. In terms of the benefits, you know, if you just do the two-for-one trade here, given that the cost of putting up a billboard, electronic versus static, discounting the cost of paying for the printing, which the consumer pays for, not the company, they're making basically the same amount of money per ad. So, a two-for-one trade in faces would mean that they'd make four times as much money. Now, of course, there'd be a return on investment of the electronics, but still, I think four-to-one, four times as much money is pretty good, and this public gets no cut in terms of the benefit, or taxes and things like that. So, yeah, wayfinding is something Diane mentioned, and frankly, there are lots of ways to do wayfinding. And, you know, things like courthouses and downtowns should be labeled permanently. They don't need to be put up. Yeah, special events are fun, and it's nice to get something out there. And we can do that with, you know, temporary signs that we put in the rights of way already. We do other things to achieve that. So, I think that's another thing. But ultimately, for me, I've been in cities, states, and countries that don't allow billboards. I've been in places where only monument signs are allowed. And frankly, Carol Osgood, as far as I'm concerned, hit a home run with her comments in that the aesthetics of a community that has only monument signage is one that I much prefer. And that's a vision that I would like to have for this community as well. I've encouraged staff to look at downsizing our existing signs over time as it is. And the only way we can get rid of the digital, or the current billboards that we have is probably to buy them out. Or, on the other hand, just give it time, and maybe they will go away. But the thing that ultimately comes into play here is if you allow digital billboards now, there is no turning back. They will be with us forever. And so, for that particular reason, you know, I hope you do, you know, if there's a majority that pushes this, please do the right thing and address the issues that I raised, but I won't support it, period.
Others?
Good evening, Alex.
Yes, Aaron Amens.
So, I agree with Charlie that this is going to be, I think it's not ready yet. The ordinance is not ready yet, whatever we, whether or not folks agree on it or not. I think that's something that's extremely relevant. And I like what you said, Diane. I thought you had some very poignant points about the ways that things could be used and stuff like that. And you're right, there's no way to get rid of the other billboards but to wait them out, or whatever, there would be a reduction. And I like what you said about, let's deal with facts and not necessarily the fears. And I think that it's impossible for us to say that billboards and any other form of advertising is not a distraction. I mean, when I drive down the street, I see ads on MTD buses, I see the ads on buildings, I see advertisement is everywhere. And so, to some degree, I feel that it's unfair to single out Adams as the only distraction on the streets. I do feel that that's a bit unfair. I do feel that that's a bit unfair. But I also recognize that, you know, so I'm just sort of caught, torn in between the middle here, and at this particular point, I would have to vote no on it moving forward. But I do think there's room for the negotiations or whatever, and possibly something to, to move forward later. At this particular time, I would not be able to support this, though.
Any other comments? Yes, Michael.
Well, I just want to shed a little bit of light on this from a small business perspective, a local business. I don't necessarily think that it's been accurately portrayed about the economics of purchasing billboard advertising from Adams. Prior to their digital billboards existing in Champaign, I was not a billboard advertiser. I could not afford it. It is, in fact, more economical to advertise, and I do have it in my mix of advertising in Champaign. I think it is, to a large degree, it is somewhat of a, an equalizer for local businesses. If you look at static billboards in most communities, and certainly here, you can categorize them in about three or four different categories. Realtors, car dealers, national chain restaurants, casinos, and the state. So, pretty much about five. Maybe I'm missing somebody, I don't know. But it's all big, big entities. On the other hand, when you go to Champaign, and, and if you've gone over there and actually looked at the digital billboards, you'll see that there are actually several local businesses advertising. So to say that they're making eight times the money on a digital than they are on a static face, it just cannot be true. The economics don't play out. Are they making more money on a digital? Yes, probably. Sure. I'll concede that. But it is something I can afford. And for, oh, I don't have to pay for any printing. I mean, and that's all built into the monthly charge, you know? I mean, you, you know, I, I'll just, I'll tell you, they have four digital billboards, I pay 500 bucks a face a month. I can afford that. I can't afford 1,500 or 2,000 a face for one, and don't do it. And if, if the folks who oppose this want to get this over with, support what's in front of you right now. Because Adams will not install one digital billboard under this ordinance. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense for a few reasons. One of which is the dwell time, and we need to all get over this, folks. 10 seconds, 90 seconds, it doesn't make a difference. It's all about transition. And the transition, there's no, there is no illusion. It is just a transition. It is not distracting. It is just a change from one ad to the other. There's no blinking, there's no animation. And 10 seconds, to me, as a small business owner, is important, because I'm in the rotation more often. And there is absolutely no science anywhere in the world that has said that an eight or 10-second rotation is a distraction, more so than 90 seconds or anything else. If I'm wrong, I'll be glad to admit it, but I have not seen any. Champaign has that, and that's another important point here. I think we ought to try, in this instance, to be consistent with our sister city, because they've had no problems, no issues, and this makes, this makes it attractive for a small business in the Champaign-Urbana community to advertise across city limits. But I also can count, and I'm not going to go into a whole bunch of other things, I have other issues. I think clearly this is not ready for prime time. There have been some issues raised about whether or not there ought to be some further restrictions on the overlay of the map. But the bottom line is, if you do want to have some kind of reduction in inventory over time, or at least as the city grows over time, then we ought to at least consider banking, and there should not be a two-year limit. A two-year limit is unrealistic. I live in a subdivision that is half-full, and it's over 20 years old. Economic development, let's all just face it, is not happening at the pace we would all like in this community. A two-year banking of a, of a sign is completely unrealistic. There ought to be some serious consideration given to that. But I don't want to belabor this anymore, we've got a long agenda, and I, I believe we ought to just hold this thing, because I think that everybody has, everybody still has questions and concerns about what's in front of us. That is not to take away from what I think has been a tremendous effort on the part of the staff, to put together something that is workable, and I don't think we're all that far away, honestly. Apparently, we're too far for Charlie, but.
Can I ask you just a question, because I'm confused?
Aaron?
I thought Kane said that the static billboard for four weeks in a particular location would be $1,500, and that the purchase of a digital in rotation is also $1,500. Isn't that what she said?
If you wanted to buy one location, you can buy multiple locations for a price for a billboard.
So the only way, so I'm confused, is how do you get it for $500? I don't understand, because he bought five locations.
There is no insider deal here, okay?
I, I'm not trying to put you out there like that. You're the one saying it, so I'm just saying, you know, but I was, I, I thought you were very clear, you said it was $1,500 for, to get in rotation. So you're saying that if a person buys several different locations in Champaign, they can get a reduced cost even for the digital billboards? Okay. I just want folks to have clarity, and I didn't have that initially.
Yeah.
You asked about buying one. That's a good question.
Yeah, I think, and there are multiple ways to buy, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, and, and the most economical for me was to buy four. I got on four different thoroughfares, you know, in that, in that quick rotation, so I have a lot of coverage.
For the Texas Tater.
For the Texas Tater, when I have it.
Okay.
When I don't run out.
All right, for the, Bill Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple more things. I, I wanted to agree with Diane's analysis of how important it is to reach out to people that are temporarily in town, whether it's coming for a U of I event, or whether they work in town, because according to census statistics, our population goes up by more than 10,000 people every day, because we have a lot of jobs in town. We have a lot of people that work at the courthouse, the hospitals, the university, the Urbana School District, half of their employees live outside of Urbana. So we have a lot of people that come here every day and might not be tuned into the VUNA list, or the social media, or check our website every day or anything. So one of the ways to reach these people is where they are, in their cars, commuting. And so if it's a matter of trying to inform them how great our community is, what kind of, you know, events we have, the latest open house, if they're looking for a, a house, you know, all those things can be done on a timely basis, better with, with the digital ad. And then as far as no benefit to the community, I know one of the biggest advertisers I've seen on your billboards, at least lately, is O'Brien Automotive, and we receive, I think, $240,000 every year that goes into TIF four, is it, from O'Brien Automotive? And we get somewhere between half a million and a million, I'm kind of guessing, in sales tax revenue every year from O'Brien Automotive. Big businesses that are successful know they have to advertise, and they know they have to spend a lot of money advertising, and they can't always say exactly what advertising does what, but they know if they stop, their business goes down. So that's how, that's how Urbana benefits from advertising. Again, I think the biggest objection that I've heard from people is that they do notice when it changes. I don't know if it's, it obviously doesn't cause accidents that we know of, but they do notice that it changes, and that seems to be one of the biggest, at least aesthetic objections. So I think it's important to realize that and try to address that. And then just a couple other things on light pollution, that was brought up. From what I understand, the digital billboards actually focus the, the pixels more on the ground than, than the regular billboards do. The regular billboards have lights on the bottom and shine up against the billboards, they go, the light goes up into the air and reflects off of the, you know, the humidity and everything, and that's what causes light pollution. That's what makes it hard to see the stars. But when you have a digital billboard, it's more focused on the cars, on the street, and where, you know, it's, it's focused forward, not up. And then finally, just, I guess I already mentioned, not everybody, not everybody has constant access to social media, and sometimes an ad timely placed for something that you're not necessarily looking for. It's true, you can, you can seek out what events are happening, but sometimes an ad, say for child abuse prevention, when you've, you know of a situation in your apartment complex that pops up on the digital ad, just happens to be at the right time, at the right place, where it will give you that 800 number to call. So there's a, a lot of kind of secondary benefits to a lot of this that I think people need to be aware of, too.
Diane Marlin?
Just a quick point of information. I was very concerned about the issue of distracted driving and potential for accidents, and in the absence of national and international, definitive national or international studies. I called the head of the planning department at the city of Champaign. They've had digital billboards for seven years now, and I basically asked, have there been any traffic accidents, pedestrian or car, related to or linked to distracted driving, walking, or biking, in digital billboards? And Bruce Knight said to his knowledge, no. So as a, as the closest experimental city, I guess we could look at our neighbor and their experience for the last seven years, but that's just a point of information. I would move that we keep this topic in committee.
Second. And is there a comment or question about that? I guess I haven't had a chance to make any comments, so could I, could I give, ask Bill Brown to take the chair for a minute?
Yes, the chair recognizes Dennis Roberts.
All right. All right, so we're looking at this and holding it in committee. I'm not sure what we're going to gain from doing that. I, I made a, I passed out a document here that I put together that actually talks about the nine points that the staff had brought up concerning their concerns, or changes to the ordinances proposed. Number one, brightness levels, I don't have any problem with going to 2.5-foot candles, I certainly think that's more advisable than three. I support the buffer zone, including R4, because people do live in residential areas, and they do have second-floor bedrooms in townhouses and multifamily apartments, and these people need to be as protected as anybody else, as well as R2 and R3. The shut-off time at night, I, I would, I don't see why the billboards can't be turned off at 10. That's what we require for people to be quiet during their Urbana noise ordinance that we have on the books and have had for a long time. 12 o'clock midnight, I don't know, 11 o'clock would be probably more appropriate. 10 o'clock, I think, would be preferable. We're talking about billboard density in the community, number four. You know, we have a lot of billboards already, a lot of them were established during a, an open gate period, which the city of Urbana then attempted to close. And it took a lot of very careful management and research to limit the number of, to establish sufficient buffer zones between the billboards, which is one of the reasons why, and as a matter of fact, we had such a great team that put that ordinance together, that it was also a model for other communities in this Illinois, and it is one that holds up constitutionally in the courts. So putting significant buffers around billboards and maintaining them is, you know, part of the practice here in Urbana. Now, I would like to see larger buffers than what we're offering, but maybe we're not going to see that. But, you know, from what I can tell, looking at the maps that were provided to us in the ordinance itself, we have Exhibit D and Exhibit E, and we have a map here of the city of Urbana, and, let's see if I can get this right. All the areas in blue, it says on this map, are digital billboard eligible areas. And so the digital, digital billboard eligible areas swat, the complete swath of Cunningham Avenue, pretty much the complete swath of Lincoln Avenue above Bradley, and a lot of University Boulevard. So these are the three major arterial areas of our community, plus over there at, at Walmart, High Cross Road, and I, and I stay around 50, 150. Now, if we apply the, the buffer zones that exist, it still leaves significant areas where a billboard could be placed, including University, University Avenue at Goodwin and at Wright Street, not exactly on the corner, but very close to that. There's a place on University Boulevard, pretty much near Elm, Weber Street. There are, you know, places then at, at the entrance to the expressway, and on Bradley and Lincoln Avenue. These are areas that do not, are not prohibiting due to the buffer. These are outside the buffer zones. So there are really a lot of places where digital could be placed. And then when you think about it, if, if all of these areas along Cunningham, and all of, all the areas around, along University and, and Lincoln are, are OASS eligible areas, that means that replacements could be made there. Now, we did talk about what, what is possible in the B3 and B4, so I'd like to have some clarity. Maybe, Jeff, you could explain why this whole entire, entire area along University is, on the south side of University, is an area where digital billboards could be placed in the future. How does that work out? You're talking about a replacement? If there were replacements, some removed, these are locations that were, that a new digital could be placed, is that correct?
Yes. If billboards within 1,000 feet were removed, then they could be replaced there.
Okay. And there are certainly some places here along that bou- along the Boulevard where it would be entirely possible to do that. All right. So one of my concerns, of course, is the fact that we've got in place three different plans for arterial and street beautification. Cunningham Avenue beautification plan adopted in 2008. University Avenue corridor study of March 2010. And the beautification of North Broadway, because it's been related to the Boneyard Creek. All of these areas where we have previously adopted streetscape and beautification plans, some of them have not been fulfilled. Would certainly not be a, a place where I could support placing a new billboard, a digital billboard. I'd like to see some taken down, but is it in my, I don't think it's in our best interest to put a billboard that's going to change and offer six different ads for the place of one at these locations. That's not my concept of beautification. We've asked, and I've asked specifically about removing particular billboards, which have been, I would think, an eyesore in the community for quite a long time. Right at the corner of Main and Vine, at the Sheriff's Department, Cunningham Avenue and University, where the Blockbuster store is, and North, North Broadway, where Boneyard Creek comes in. You know, there's, we've also have, Lincoln and University, we've talked about that intersection for a long time. This is where there was a fatality. There's a railroad crossing there. There are, you know, five turn lanes in some directions. And I would think that this is already going to be a place where pedestrians and bicyclists are challenged. And yet, to think that we might put up a digital billboard on that corner, it's like twice as worrying some to me than allowing static billboards to remain where they are. You know, so if Adams Outpour says that it's not interested in, in addressing the removal of key billboards, which have been, I think, a target area of the city for quite a few years, what's the point of allowing billboard replacement if you can't take down the ones that you really want to have taken down? I think that if, if Adams was really going to offer us a really sweet deal to get those billboards adopted in Urbana, they would be making offers to take down the ones that are most objectionable, but they don't seem to be ready to do that. And, and finally, the whole question about driving safety, besides, you know, pedestrian And finally, the whole question about driving safety, besides, you know, pedestrian safety and bicycle safety and distracted driving, you know, we've seen entire countries like Sweden somehow decide that they made a big mistake in allowing digital billboards. And I recall reading a, reading a study that said that because of, one of the things that they came across was that, or was it Minnesota that they made this discovery, that, that sideswipe accidents were increased, you know, by multiple percent because of digital billboard or, or car distractions. They're also talking about distractions within the car, but now we also have distractions without, outside the car. Finally, you know, it's one thing to have, we have access to numerous sources of advertising in this community. My Sunday paper is, the ad section that's enclosed in it really outweighs the news that I receive on Sunday, because the packet is gigantic. We've had the dwindling of news, but we have the non-dwindling, the perseverance of advertising in multiple forms. At the airport, at the, at the, at the gas station. Digital imagery is in front of you when you're waiting in line at the bank. So I would have to agree with, with a lot of the points that Carol Osgood made. I thought she really understood what quality of life is, is and what it can be defined as. And if you have any kind of sense that you prefer organic food, or you like shopping at, market at the square, or you think that having, supporting what we just, we're just talking about earlier in this evening about the Arbor Division getting a grant from, from Ameren to continue working on advancing Tree City USA, how can then you come and call and discuss about inserting what is really going to be, does the opposite of Tree City USA, it's Billboard City USA? So I have a lot of questions that I, that I'm very much, find very troubling about the digital billboard image, picture. At this point, I'm not supporting it. And if we were going to adopt an ordinance, it would have to be so, it would have to be, give us so much, we'd have to support the city's core values so much for the trade-off that we would get these particular billboards removed that we request, because this is important to our community and has been talked about for so long, among other things, which I think we deserve, if we're going to say that our quality of life is something that's a little bit different perhaps than Champaign's or other communities nearby. I'll return the chair to Dennis. Okay. So that was my rant. So we have, we have a motion and a second about keeping this in committee, you know. I don't know if that's a wise or not, but further questions or comments? Are you going to make one, Charlie?
Yeah, just real quick. Dennis, you reminded me of one thing, you know, over time, costs for electronic billboards will come down, and all of the existing ones will be made conforming and will get X number of digital billboards across the community in the locations that are permitted. So, you know, that's something to keep in mind as a new ordinance, or as you go forward trying to figure out how to clean this one up, you know. So I appreciate all the points that Mike has brought up, and, and maybe that's worthwhile, you know, but, but we need to keep in mind, you know, how many digital billboards could eventually exist in the overall scheme.
And I can answer that definitively.
Okay, Michael.
It'll be the number of billboards that the market can bear. And in, in the...
Well, there are 37 face, or there are 72 faces now.
But you have to have enough businesses willing to purchase that advertising, and the market's not there.
Well, what I'm saying is the cost of the technology is going to come down so that it makes it worthwhile to replace all of the existing static ones with electronic ones. That's my point, yeah.
Sure. But you still have to have a market that can bear that amount of advertising, and we're, we're not there. A lot of folks who talk about this turning into Las Vegas, that ain't going to happen.
Yeah, but I'd like to think 25, 50 years out.
25 or 50 years out, if, if Urbana's a half a million people at that point, I think we can withstand, you know, 37 digital billboards.
You know, I made the observation myself. There is a digital billboard at University just on the west side of Wright Street, so it's very close to the city limit. It's pretty much on the north side of the street from World Marketplace. And I stopped to look at the number of ads around it. One of the ads was for the World, what is it? World Market? Right across the street, World Harvest. Every other ad was Carl Hospital. And I don't think that they, the charity ads, I think those are probably purchased ads. I thought that was interesting. Yeah, Bill Brown.
Yeah, I just, I think there's still a lot of confusion, because obviously you won't be able to replace all 72 of those with digital, because they have to be 1,000 feet apart. So they're going to have to take down billboards to put up digital. So I think we need to stop misleading people.
No, my, my point was that we will have a trade-off, but eventually we will have X number of them, and what is that X number? And, and in the locations that they are permitted, that's my point, is that in the map that Dennis was holding up earlier, the map that we all have, you know, how many digital billboards, and this, the staff can figure this out, could we potentially have on, in the existing scenario where everything is conforming? Is it 20? Is it 30? Is it two?
All right, so let's take a vote, I guess. All those in favor of keeping this in committee indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. I guess that's, yeah. All right, which I guess kind of makes moot the next ordinance, the next resolution or whatever it's called, if I can get back to my notes. Yeah, thanks. Which is, Ordinance 2015-03-022, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the City of Urbana. And this is a revision of the Article 9 and 11 regarding Digital Outdoor Signs and Structures Planning Commission Case 2242-T14.
Could we just move to hold this?
Yeah, we might, I think we're going to the same direction.
Move to hold committee.
Second. Okay, so we don't want to have any conversation yet?
No.
Okay. Those in, in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None? Okay, that's held in committee, too. All right. All right, now I'm back. Thank you so much. I got it. All right, then we have this insertion here after the digital billboards. We're going to talk about number 16 on the agenda. Ordinance number 2015-04-1019R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement for Pygmalion Technology Conference, Fine Brisoni Incorporated, 2015. Brandon Vois.
So we have Seth Fine and Patrick Singer here from Pygmalion Festival. They can talk a little bit about what they're proposing and answer any questions you might have. The Pygmalion Music Fest has been around for a number of years. How many years exactly, Seth? I didn't have that number when I wrote the memo.
Pygmalion's entering its 11th year.
11 years. I'm sure you've all heard of it. It's premier festival in our community and in the Midwest as well. It's expanded to include crafts and literature. We had over 10,000 people in, I think that was the 2014, last year's event alone. And this year, Pygmalion is proposing adding on a new component, a technology conference that would take place at the Research Park in downtown Urbana and Cranert Center for the Performing Arts. And this is a, we've been approached to sponsor this event. The organizers are requesting a $5,000 sponsorship, and that's what the agreement before you would serve to do. The agreement also recognizes the use of crowd control barriers, which is an in-kind value of 15,000. But please bear in mind that, that that in-kind service of the city providing that racking for the crowd control barriers, that is a, a common courtesy that those rack, that racking is exchanged sort of freely between cities, and major events are not typically charged for the use of that. So while we are recognizing that in-kind value of that service, of the use of those, of that racking, it's not unusual for the city to provide it. In general, staff have recognized that this is a unique opportunity to market Urbana, to a targeted demographic of skilled professionals and entrepreneurs that is frequently discussed at Economic Development Corporation board meetings as the demographic we want to recruit to our community. It's also an opportunity to associate and brand our downtown with technology, being a technology-friendly community, and supportive of the innovation that occurs at the University of Illinois and amongst our many private companies. What more can you tell us about the event, gentlemen?
Greetings to you all. Actually, we were talking earlier about, earlier today, that maybe we'd have a panel on the nature of advertising and digital billboards, but I'm not sure we're going to do it anymore. You guys handled it.
It's too soon, Seth. It's too soon.
Not this year.
You did it. So we can't, that's not going to work. So, yeah, so if you're unfamiliar, the Pygmalion Festival is coming into its 11th year. It's something that I started kind of on a whim in 2005, and over the years, it's grown in different directions, made some mistakes, made some big mistakes, made a lot of, had a lot of really great successes. And, you know, as we've learned, you know, the community, of course, is a live music community, but there's so many different interests, so many different people, so many different types of cultural components that, you know, really make an impact here. Three years ago, we introduced literature and craft fair. And while we have plans for film and comedy and food and all sorts of different things, tech, that word being very broad and fairly undefined, is what we want to do next. And the plan essentially is to integrate speakers, panelists, and demos into what we're already doing at the music festival. And we believe strongly, based on a lot of research, going to different events, live music events, festivals, that have integrated tech components, that it improves attendance, but it also improves the way that the cultures relate to one another. It stands to reason that people who are into live music are also into how social media affects their consumption of that, or, you know, if they're potentially into, you know, mobile development, they might be into the band that's performing later that night. And it keeps people around, it keeps people engaged and interested. So that's something that we're going to do, and we're going to do it in a first year, with a first-year mindset. And so from that perspective, we're trying to be very careful about how we proceed. We don't want to bite off more than we can chew. Every year, Pygmalion's taken a step forward. It's been calculated, it's been thoughtful. As a result of that, we don't have any grand ambitions for 2015 in trying to approach, you know, major corporations that can fund this thing, maybe down the road. And as time goes on, we believe that Champaign-Urbana is the type of community that can host something like a Sundance that could get national attention. Pygmalion already does get quite a bit of national attention. But for this year, we've got to introduce it, and we've got to find a good way to fund it. And that's why we're asking for the City of Urbana's support. We'll do the same for the City of Champaign. We're looking to support from particular components of the University of Illinois, and the Research Park in particular. I think one of the most important, you know, things that I want to present to you is that we have every intention of being, of this being very educational. The idea of bringing people from all over the country to come and speak about what it is they're doing to move the dial forward in terms of technology has an educational component, especially in this community. As such, we have every intention of making this part of Pygmalion free to University of Illinois students and potentially to Parkland students as well. And so in order to do that, we're making the rounds. And so that's why we're here tonight. Patrick Singer, to my right, is the director of the tech component, and we'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions, then? Yes. Diane.
What's your overall budget for this conference?
At this, at this point, where we're at, like Seth mentioned, it's fairly undefined, considering that we know there are costs involved with producing any sort of event. We've obviously done this, I've done this three years now, and Seth's done it for 10 years. Obviously, putting on an event costs a certain amount of money. So while we're unsure of our total budget at this point, you know, seeking the support of the people like City of Urbana and like City of Champaign and the Research Park and the University in order to make this a viable event, we, we, you know...
What amount would make it viable?
We would say 50,000 is our total budget for year one.
That's your threshold, then, you're shooting for...
That'd be nice.
That'd be nice, all right. And is this going to happen before Pygmalion starts or during?
So it'll be integrated. So it'll be, it'll be part of it. That's the idea that we want...
So people can go listen to music, they can go have, look at a, be in a workshop?
Yeah, exactly. We don't, we don't want, we don't want the events to compete necessarily. We don't want them to cannibalize each other, but we want it to, you know, flow. So the rough sketch right now is that Urbana would have two days and Champaign would have one. So the Pygmalion Festival would start with like an opening night party with snacks. And we had, and then the next day, we'd have events at Research Park in downtown Urbana and, not in. And so downtown Urbana would host the Pygmalion Tech Conference that day. And then into the evening, we'd have live music and authors as part of the Lit Fest. On Friday, the whole thing would take place in the Cranert Center District, at Cranert Center and Canopy Club and Marion's Diner, Bread Company, all those sort of options. So the tech panels, the demos, the keynote speakers would all take place during the day, and that would give way to when live music would start in the evening. The idea is to create a critical mass and to create something that you don't see every weekend.
Okay, I have...
And I have one question. There's a reference to the UBA-City Sweet Corn Agreement. I assume that's just a typo in the memo?
It's only in the memo, though, not in the agreement.
It has nothing to do with the UBA?
It has nothing to do with the UBA.
Okay, all right. Just making sure there was, where the funding was coming from.
Okay. And I've got a question. What would be your venue here in Urbana?
Multiple venues. So right now...
Specifically, I mean, like, what building are you going to be doing this in or whatever?
Multiple venues.
Multiple.
So right now, if we had, if we had our druthers, it would be Cafeteria Company, Urbana Free Library, Iron Post, Rose Bowl, potentially Train Alley, IMC, what am I missing? Pixo, potentially, discussing possibilities with them. County Plaza. There's all kinds of different arenas. We're not going to do an outdoor, like, big concert on a Thursday night. We've learned that the costs associated with that are extreme for a four-hour concert. But there's all kinds of wonderful, smaller venues in downtown Urbana. Of course, you're familiar with them, and there's all kinds of spaces. And that's, I think, something that we really want to develop and promote, is the idea that, you know, you think about a technology conference or any kind of conference, you know, you find yourself in Providence or, you know, Boise, Idaho, or wherever they're going to do a conference, and you got to go to this conference, and you show up, and they're like, here's, you're at the hotel. And you go get your badge, and, you know, they have a catered croissant, whatever, and the coffee, and then you go, and you go to these panels, and, yeah, and you go watch PowerPoints all day, and then you stay, and we go from one room to the next, and maybe it's a different shade of beige, and that's cool. And then you go to get the catered lunch, and then there's a keynote speaker, and then there's some sort of aging musician that will entertain you at night, and you'll have, you know, snacks and cocktails perhaps, and you'll go to your hotel room and do it all over again, and you never really saw anything. You just saw a hotel, and that's all well and good. There's nothing wrong with those hotel conferences. I think people have probably a really good time at those. That's not really what we want to do. We want to showcase the, the hearts of our city. That's what Pygmalion has always intended to do, is to showcase both downtown Urbana, downtown Champaign, campus town, the local businesses that exist within it. It's really important to us, the idea that you could see someone like Tommy Craig's, who is the executive editor at Gawker Media, if you're familiar. I went to Yankee Ridge with him, and he has gone on to do amazing things in sports journalism and is now running one of the most powerful magazines in the entire world. And so, you know, at the benefit of having sung the Super Bowl Shuffle with him, and I have it on video, but he's also really partial to Champaign-Urbana, he loves the place. And so he can come back here, and you wouldn't... And so he can come back here, and you wouldn't see him at just like some stuffy hotel room, you might see him at Cafeteria Company, talking about things that matter not just to us, but matter to the world. I mean, I think at a certain point, Champaign-Urbana, I mean, we continue to celebrate ourselves as technological leaders and a space where musicians and artists and filmmakers are, you know, develop their, hone their craft. But the same reason Pygmalion started as a music festival, that wanted to marry the idea of big national artists coming in and putting locals as part of that bill, we want to do the same thing here. So maybe someone from WLL is speaking on the same panel with somebody from NPR, and you have that opportunity to marry those ideas. And it's really important to us as we continue to develop the culture of Champaign-Urbana in addition to, you know, the economic infrastructure, digital billboards and everything.
Thank you for doing this. I think this is, I'm good to support it, and I think, so if it's as well done as Pygmalion, you'll bring a lot of new opportunities and a lot of networking opportunities, and like you say, mixing the local tech crowd with the national scene can only be good. And so just wanted to say thanks for doing it and good luck. I think it's a great project.
Thanks, Bill.
Diane.
You might consider using one of our wonderful locally and centrally located schools, which would be a great way to showcase.
Well, I went to Urbana High School, and I biked there, and...
Would be a great way to showcase, use it as a venue for one of your things.
I hear what you're saying, Diane, and I appreciate it.
Aaron.
So actually, honestly, the first time I heard of Pygmalion was last year during the elections and stuff, and Laura Raymers and some of the other folks were going out to it. So how do you plan to, or maybe you already do this, advertising into different neighborhoods? Because it doesn't, it seems like it's a campus type of...
You're just teeing it up, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
You're just teeing it up.
So you know what I'm asking you, so how are you working on that?
So from an advertising perspective, we're, at this point, we're in a fairly fortunate position after a decade of promoting Pygmalion as a brand, where we don't have to do a ton of like paid advertisement, especially in this market. But with the technology component, I think that we probably would consider doing some more targeted, focused advertising that shows a broader community than the music scene, what it is we're trying to do. But because we're in our first year doing the tech conference, we're going to make really calculated decisions as to how we present it. We strongly believe in the viability of social media and of digital advertising. It's true, we also publish an online magazine called Smile Politely, which gives us a reach into the community. But we believe that we're as, we're going to be as successful as our ability to bring in talent and interesting speakers. I could spend $100,000 on the wrong band, and nobody would come, and I could buy as many billboards that were available, and it wouldn't matter. Nobody wants to see that band because they're terrible, and so that's my fault. We succeed when we do our research, we develop a good understanding of what our market looks like and what people want to see. And we feel strongly about what the lineup looks like for this year, that we'll reveal on May 5th theoretically. We, we really want to advertise in ways that are effective but cost-effective.
So, so the budget that you just threw out, rough budget of $50,000, is for the entire event, not just for the tech aspect of it?
No, for the tech aspect. I mean, the event, the Pygmalion event that we had last year was above quarter of a million dollars, for all the artists, the staffing, travel, everything, production, everything.
And so the tech piece that you want to add, the sort of literature and stuff like that...
Well, those are two separate. There's the lit, there's the lit event, and there's the tech event.
Right. So in particular, knowing the age that we're in, the technology and all that type of stuff, are you advertising in low-income African-American areas? Do you reach out there to get, to expose the community to that, to what you're talking about?
Yeah, for sure. So the music festival component that we've done for the last 10 years is decidedly not educational. It's a particular genre of music. We've never been, you know, we've never been anything but transparent about that. The indie rock genre is what it is, and it's what we know, and if I really wanted to make a ton of money, I'd just do a country music festival, because they buy tickets at a premium rate and they drink a lot. And like, I know that because I've done a lot of research on this. But I don't want to do that. I don't like country music all that much. It's okay, I mean, I had a good time this weekend when I went to the new place at Fat City, but I don't want to wake up in the morning and promote a country music festival. I want to wake up in the morning and promote the things that I grew up, grew up in, which is rock music for the most part. So admittedly, while we've had a number of African-American performers over the year, Janelle Monae comes to mind, Black Jacks come to mind, you know, the technology conference gives us a chance to delve into a component, a part of the community that is so much more, you know, varied and diverse. So one of our goals in booking this tech conference is to make sure that it's not a bunch of white dudes talking about technology. From that perspective, we have every intention of really engaging all the different components of the city and continuing to do that as time goes on. I think you're probably aware, Mr. Ammons, that it's something that's important to me and something that I need to learn more about, and I plan on continuing to pursue that. And I think I'd be foolish to not just say, "I appreciate, you know, I appreciate that you even challenged me on that, because we're not going to get anything done unless you sit there and tell me or ask me how I'm going to do it." So that's why I really like you.
Thank you.
Well, that's bold, and I appreciate that type of, I appreciate that type of engagement, you know, let's, let's not pull any punches. We need to engage the African-American community with Pygmalion. We're in. How do we do it? We should probably talk.
All right, thanks, Bill.
Yeah.
And Charlie.
Well, I, I enjoyed myself last year at the music side of this thing, and I think Seth can, Seth and Patrick can pull something off here, so I too support it. You mentioned NPR, another successful local person that you probably went to school with at least some of the times, Jeremy Hobson comes to mind.
I like Jeremy.
Yeah, you could, you probably should invite him, maybe he can get some good coverage that way. And then, you know, I know you've gotten, you know, you're getting some of your influence here from South by Southwest. What else is, what else have you, what else is inspiring you to, you know, where else are you getting your inspiration for, for some of this?
I think we're, I think we're inspired a lot by what we don't like...
Okay.
In a lot of ways. Because we've been to, just last summer, we went to a couple conferences that were combined music and tech, and we found ourselves realizing the topics that we really liked, but the venues in a lot of ways were ones that were not our, not our bag. So the idea of bringing it into the community is kind of what Seth has done for a long time, but with the tech part especially, showcasing these places like Pixo or like the Pale Gray, Paley Gray Labs, or, you know, the Urbana Free Library and things like that, or the sites at Research Park and having those things integrated. So I guess to answer your question, we've been inspired by what we don't like in order to kind of turn the idea of a tech conference on its head. From a lot of the conversations that I've been having, I've almost wanted to work away from using the term "conference," because there's such a, there's such a defined picture of what that looks like and what a conference looks like, sitting in a, you know, sitting in a hotel conference.
In some ways, you remind, you know, there's the Roots Festival, which has some of the same, you know, it's spread out all over...
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the idea of spreading it, spreading it out in a bunch of venues is kind of, you know, it's a good goal to have within reason. Luckily for Downtown Urbana, there are, you know, five or six super viable venues to be able to use, all within, you know, five block, or, you know, a four-block radius or so, whether you go from the IMC to Urbana Free Library to Cafeteria Company to Pixo to, you know, County Plaza, those sorts of things are super interesting to us because it keeps people within the realm of Downtown Urbana. So critical mass is super important to us, that's why we've carefully thought about this, whether it comes to Friday at Cranert Center, having all sorts of aspects of Pygmalion Festival within the walls of Cranert Center, or whether it's Downtown Champaign, having the outdoor shows and the Lit Fest and things like that. So when we look at Downtown Urbana, we think, we see a really awesome opportunity to be able to deliver that, and we feel good about the areas and the venues that we've kind of sought, that we've sought out to be able to do, whether it's working with Macho and Cafeteria Company and, or it's Pixo, the, you know, a very cool tech company that exists in Downtown Urbana, those are the sorts of things that we're looking for. So in a roundabout way, we're inspired by what we don't like.
And at this point, is there a motion?
I move to send to council the recommendation for approval.
Second. Who's going to take the second on that? Bill?
I want to hear it.
All right, other discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, me too. All right. To council with approval. Now, we're going to go back to our regular schedule of, of the ordinances and such, and we're going to hit Resolution 2015-04-014R, a resolution approving the modifications to the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium fiscal year 2014 to 15 annual action plan relating to neighborhood revitalization and program income. Jen? Jen Gonzalez, hello?
Hello. So the proposed amendment would amend the current fiscal year's annual action plan the amount of $170,862. Staff has seen an increased demand for our down payment program, the Urbana Dream, over and above our current whole house rehabilitation program. The proposed amendment would consolidate the city's programs under the neighborhood revitalization activity that's already listed in the annual action plan in anticipation of an uptake in down payment awards. We're still working on the underwriting guidelines and policies, but in all likelihood, the grants would probably be limited to about $5,000 in order to reach a larger amount of people. And then, I guess lastly, I'll keep it really short, the city commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendment. I can take any questions?
Yeah, real quickly, I assume it's an Urbana-only program?
Yes.
And, but people can use some of the money as down payment for a Habitat House? Is that...
Oh, yeah, that was, I did talk about that with CDC. I believe so, as long as it doesn't conflict with any other grant funding that Habitat is receiving, correct?
Okay, and so, and I guess the way I'm reading some of the, a lot of people that have already, you know, the reason you're shifting the money is, is that a lot of people have already used what they can, no longer qualify, sort of saturated that program, is that what you're saying? Do we need to leave any money behind for that other program?
Well, and that's what the proposed amendment will do. It'll allow us to allocate these funds toward down payment if the whole house, you know, isn't speeding up like we would hope that it would. But we are revamping the guidelines for the whole house rehab program, hoping to make it more marketable and a little easier on homeowners in the long run.
Okay, we're going to take this now.
Move to send to council with a recommendation for approval?
Okay, that's Charlie.
Try Smythe, seconded by Erin Ammons. Okay, any discussion? Those indicating, oh, those approving indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? Okay, that passes, goes to council. Probably going to ask the next thing, too, aren't you? All right, let's hit Resolution 2015-04-015R, a resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium, Habitat Spring 2015. What do you want to say about that?
Yeah, I can actually take that resolution in conjunction with item 11 on the agenda, I believe.
Okay, I'll read that one, too. Resolution 2015-04-016R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an urban Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development organizational agreement, Habitat-Chudo developer for the year 2014-15.
We try to make our titles, it's difficult for possible as possible. Okay, so this is a contract approving financing for five new Habitat houses. Three are proposed for the City of Champaign, addresses of which are on page two of the memo, and then two would be in Urbana, one on Eads and another on Roamine. Habitat requested $150,000. We currently only had about $118,000 in our Chudo coffers, if you will, and so Urbana is a little shy in our commitments for this fiscal year, and we thought we would meet the balance of that request in order to fully finance those two homes that are in Urbana. So they would basically be almost 50% Urbana home entitlement and 50% Chudo for the homes that are on Eads and on Roamine. So I can take questions about these particular projects, if there are any?
Are there questions? Yes?
No, I'd like to move Resolution Number 2015-04-015R to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, Diane? And then seconded by Charlie. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, any, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Following the next resolution? Charlie?
I'll move item number 11, Resolution 2015-416R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a Urbana Home Consortium Community Development, Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, the Chudo Agreement, for fiscal year 14-15. To council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, Erin, seconded. Any more discussion on that? Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, that's good. Thank you very much. So, one more. Resolution Number 2015-04-017R, a resolution approving additional modifications to the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium for the year 2013 to 14 annual action plan. This is the Home County TBRA amendment. Jen?
Thank you. So this proposed additional amendment is actually revising what we had originally allocated for a 301 Thompson project. It was a demolition and new construction, and ended up getting delayed by quite a bit and fell through. And so the $80,000 that was originally allocated for fiscal year 13-14 to that project, we are proposing to revise and reallocate those funds in support of the No Limits Program, which is the tenant-based rental assistance program operated by RPC. And this was also forwarded by the city commission with a unanimous recommendation of approval.
Okay, very good. Is there discussion or questions for Jen?
Yeah, I have, so this, I'm trying to make sure I'm keeping up here. We're talking about, how much money are we talking about? Is it the $80,000?
Yes, this is $80,000.
And it was going to go to RPC to, to what exactly again? I'm not exactly sure.
Oh, it is, it's a rental assistance program, so these are participants who are working towards self-sufficiency goals, they get case management that RPC can provide. We, as a staff right now and administratively, can't handle that, so that's why we really like that RPC is able to manage that. But these dollars specifically go towards the rental vouchers, if you want to think of it that way, that the tenants are using for stable housing.
Okay. And Jen, do these, does this replace funding that they've lost, or is this additional funding that actually helps more people?
Well, this is funding that will help clients that are doing well in the program continue for a second year. So there were some programmatic changes. It used to be that RPC could drop someone from the program mid-lease if they were not participating, kind of refusing to continue with the self-sufficiency component, but we had to revise those based on HUD's guidance that they have to see them through for that one-year lease, which is understandable in terms of the neighborhood and keeping things stable, and, I mean, you're working with landlords, you want people to want to participate in your program so that you have good housing available to the tenants. But that also meant that more money was being spent on, on folks who were staying in the program for a longer amount of time. So that kind of unforeseen change, they realized they were going to be a little low in providing a second year to those participants who were doing a good job of achieving their goals and working towards them for that second year of assistance as the program's currently written. So actually, Darlene Kleppel, she's the social services director over there, approached us and asked, asked for more money in order to provide that second... asked for more money in order to provide that second year of assistance that, um, they had, you know, told clients would be available. They wanted to make sure that it would be.
To sustain success.
I'm sorry?
To sustain success.
Yes.
Okay. Diane?
So, I'm just, I don't understand where the TBRA funding is coming from.
Oh, so this, um...
Who is not, who is not going to be funded as a result of it being shifted over here?
This is City of Urbana money. You're right, I did not mention that in my presentation. So, these are funds that Urbana had set aside for, um, the 301 Thompson new construction project to Habitat. And since that project fell through, we have to make another commitment for that.
And that's $80,000?
Yes.
And is RPC making, what's to prevent this from happening on a continual basis? It sounds like there's gonna be people who won't succeed in the program or choose not to fulfill the requirements each year. So, will they be falling short on a yearly basis, or?
I don't know. Can you repeat the question? I apologize. I don't know if I followed that.
This seems to be a one, a stopgap measure. Assistance for this year. What happens?
Basically, they, they took on too many clients. And so, in order to, um, thinking that more would be dropping out, and because they had to change, um, that, uh, policy, they were not allowed to drop people out, uh, it changed their projections, and they realized they'd taken on too many clients. And in order to provide that second year, um, to those people who were participating, um, they asked for more money. They'll obviously be adjusting their numbers of clients, uh, going forward to reflect the funding, um, based on that minimum of a year of assistance, uh, that families have to get through the program.
And it's a two-year program?
Well, it is, it is a one-year with an option to continue for a second year if they're successfully working towards their goals, yes.
And this money would be lost? Um, we would lose money, what, um, through, HUD would maybe, um, allocate less money in the future if we don't use this money appropriately this year?
Um, yeah, the city does have a shortfall right now with our home funds, so we're looking for ways to, um, distribute those funds in a way that meets the different needs of the income levels, the brackets that we have. Um, so, what's significant about TBRA is it helps those households that are at or below the 30% income level. Um, currently, none of our other programs can meet that target, um, just because, I mean, they can't afford to buy a house. Um, and a lot of our programs are geared towards homeownership, down payment, that sort of thing. Um, and then even with other affordable rental activities, um, you're often looking at, um, uh, units that are really marketed towards people who are closer to 50 or 60% MFI.
Right.
And Habitat, they come close, but they're, um, more in the 40 to 50% income range. So, this, um, I mean, we are in support of tenant-based rental assistance because it's meeting the, the neediest population. So, in making our commitments, that's kind of what we're balancing and weighing and making sure we're meeting the needs that we identified in our consolidated plan.
These are the people that are at the very bottom of the income levels?
Pretty much, yeah. Well, and a lot of them are in, um, you know, they're in programs, different schools, Parkland. Um, and that's something I'm actually gonna be looking at as we evaluate the different programs, because there's three right now. Um, and there's talk of consolidating the TBRA programs under one umbrella program so that it's more seen as a voucher. Um, but it's something that maybe community elements who currently operates these vouchers, um, could focus more on, you know, the mental health portion and what they're really good at and not have to worry about administering, you know, the TBRA aspect. So, there might be some changes as far as how that's, um, uh, carried out in the future too.
Okay. Okay, Charlie?
Uh, Jen, are we, oh, just supplementing the overall RPC program, or is this specifically for Urbana residents, or how does that all work, or is just all going into a big pot?
Yeah, so, the program is consortium-wide. I can, I, I can restrict it, uh, if I wanted to, um, to just serving Urbana residents. I mean, they track where people live right now anyways. Um, and I can tell you plenty of people live in Urbana. Uh, the way that Champaign worked that, um, particular issue out themselves is they wanted to see a minimum percentage of residents living in Champaign, using their vouchers in Champaign. Um, so that's something, I could bring those numbers back to you if you're curious, you know, what the actual numbers are now. It seems to be it's kind of an even spread. So, I, I honestly haven't been concerned about it. If somebody wants to live in Champaign, but they work in Urbana, or they work in Urbana, that, you know, sister community thing. Um, that's how I've thought about it, but obviously, I'm not the council, so, um, if you guys have other ideas, I'm open.
What was the percentage that Champaign used?
I would have to actually crunch those numbers. Um, well, for theirs, it was a particular sub-recipient. Um, and off the top of my head, I can't remember, because that was an old contract, so it's not operating anymore. Yeah, I don't remember.
Anybody wanna take this further then?
I'll move to send to Council with recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, Charlie Smythe and then Erin Ammons. Other discussion? Yes.
So, will we get those figures on Urbana versus Champaign next week?
Yeah, I can certainly compile those. It should be pretty easy. Yeah, it should be quick to turn around. Um, is it okay if I email you them? I don't know if I'm gonna be here next Monday. Is that all right with the council?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other conversation? Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, Resolution 2015-04-018R, a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues, single-family mortgage revenue bonds and related matters, private bond cap allocations, EIEDA. I wanna go EIEO, but I didn't do it. I was so tempted. And Series 2015-15. Did I? No. Did I? No. I did. Okay, I did, but I'll come back to it. My problem. But we'll do this one now and we'll come back.
We're gonna do the bond cap? Okay. Um, so, before you, there's a resolution approving the transfer of the volume cap in connection with the private activity bond issues. Per the IRS code, as a home room municipality, the City of Urbana is authorized to issue private activity bonds on an annual basis. So, in 2015, the maximum amount of bonds that we could issue is based, is capped at $100 per capita or $4,175,200. So, um, basically, there's three options and it's listed in the memo. Um, and that, that city could serve as an issuer, um, the city could allow the state of Illinois to issue the bonds on the city's behalf, or the option three is which the city could cede its authority to another qualified issuer, which we feel is the best option because, um, to do it in-house, um, would not be feasible because of staff capacity. Option two would not work because, um, if the state's allowed to issue the bonds, there's no guarantee there would be a local investment. And then, this is the third option, um, by ceding it to Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority, um, they have demonstrated successful local investment, um, in the community. So, um, we're proposing to allocate, um, transfer the bond cap to them. And then, um, by ceding possible future neighborhood revitalization projects, such as the Kerr Avenue Development, Urbana Town Homes redevelopment, um, or other economic development activities, um, could benefit from this bond financing. Um, and also, um, a side note, um, there was a telephone conference that we held recently with, um, EIEDA regarding the establishment of possibly a new rental rehabilitation development assistance program that could develop, assist developers in obtaining double tax-exempt financing, which would be federal and state. Um, the goal in the conference was to identify the next steps needed to establish an annual or semi-annual bond pool to provide developers with financing to assist in the acquisition and rehabilitation of local housing units, such as, it could be single-family homes, duplexes, and even multiple, multi-family apartment complexes. So, we're working out the details with them, and hopefully, a pilot program would be available next fall. But we saw this as a need, um, in, in the community. So, um, so that's other, another, um, possible use for our bond cap.
And I wanna apologize for, uh, those of you who are following this, um, with apt attention. You realize that I just skipped number 13 on the agenda, but I will come back to that. Charlie?
Move to send to Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, Charlie Smythe and Diane Marlin, seconded. Other discussion? Yes, Anne, Michael?
Just to, um, educate me a little bit. So, um, so we cede this bond authority to Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority, and then it's, um, I assume it's pooled with other, uh, other governments that cede their authority as well, or whatever is already maybe, um, assigned to that authority. Um, so, so tho, that authority is pooled. Um, there, then there's no, there's no guarantee that Urbana, uh, receives any of that back, right? I mean, it's just a matter of, uh, qualifying projects, or how does that work?
Right, but I think there, but there would be more likelihood of an Urbana project or a local project versus if it went to the state that, to do it, because they have such a larger service area. EIEDA is, I think, 14 counties, and they have, they have, um, done a lot of projects in the community. I think Eden over in Champaign, they did. So, I think that, um, there'd be more likelihood of a, you know...
And it's just not feasible in any way to keep it in-house, is what you're saying?
No, because of, of not being familiar with how to do it, but it definitely a lot of, it's a labor-intensive and staff capacity would not be able to do that.
Okay. Yeah, Mayor?
Are we transferring just a part of this bond cap?
No, we're gonna transfer the full amount.
So, I think there might be another request coming up. But we'll find that out before Monday.
Oh, it's a different bond, I think?
A different one? There's more than one bond cap? Okay.
Yeah, there's different kinds of bonds, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, hopefully, we won't lose anything, but we're gonna not, uh, we're gonna regret later. Right. So, uh, other discussion or questions? Okay, is there a motion then?
Already made the motion.
Oh, okay. You did, that's great. All right, so, um, yes, I see that. All right. Those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That resolution goes forward to City Council with approval. Let's go back to number 13 then. Ordinance Number 2015-04-032, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the year 2014 and 15 Emergency Solutions Grant.
Yes, before you, there's an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 14-15 with regard to the Emergency Solutions Grant. Um, on page two of the memo, it shows, um, the specifics of the proposed budget, budget amendment, and that is a typo. It should be ESG amendment and not a CDBG. I apologize for that. So, this shows, um, the different, um, how much revenue we're expecting and the expenditures. Um, so, staff is recommending that council approve the ordinance revising the annual budget. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
And this has to do with homelessness, about addressing home, uh, people who would...
Yes, it is for shelters and transitional housing units. Mm-hmm.
Bill Brown?
Um, what's HAPWA? You said?
HAPWA is Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks. All right, others? Any conversation? Any more questions? Yes, Michael?
So, uh, what are the source of these funds? Uh, I, I, I see it's DCEOs. So, are they state funds, or are they federal funds passed through the state?
It's federal funds through this, passed through the state, yes.
And what's the federal source?
Uh, Department of Housing and Urban Development. So, it's HUD through the state to, um, to us.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Diane Marlin?
Um, back to the HAPWA grant. I'm just curious about the GCAP request for emergency assistance on the consolidated social service funding. Is that in addition to, it's not related to this particular emergency solutions grant at all?
I don't believe so, but I haven't, haven't looked at their application, um, to, um, this, what they may be doing is possibly using this as leverage. Um, but I can certainly look at the application and see if it's, because they have a lot of different programs there. And this may be specifically in regards to housing and not, say, their case management or something, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Will there be any other conversation or a motion? Charlie?
I'll move to send this to Council with recommendation for approval.
A second. Bill Brown seconds. Charlie made some motion. Any discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, we're gonna go down to something about historic preservation. Ah, okay, ordinance Number 2015-04-031, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the, for fiscal year 2014-15 Historic Preservation Grant. What do we have? Jeff?
Yes, sir. Uh, before the council is a budget amendment ordinance to accept a certified local government grant for historic preservation activities. Um, this is a federal pass-through grant, uh, that goes through the state, um, uh, Illinois Historic Preservation Agency. Um, it's a matching grant, so, uh, $2,450 would be received by Urbana. We would expend $3,500 in total. The project is to create an interactive map, um, that would be mobile-friendly to help promote the city's historic preservation efforts. Um, mostly, it's to, uh, overcome some of the limitations of our current, this city's current website. Um, we can't show more than one dot on a map on our current website. So, this would be an interactive map showing all of our historic districts and landmarks, as well as, um, some of the other CLG projects that we've worked on in the past, such as the podcast tours of historic properties and the, uh, the list of 100 most significant, uh, properties in Urbana. Um, this would be a platform we could build on in the future. Um, and the funds are to hire an intern who has design experience and, uh, web programming experience to get that map, um, built for us.
All right, other questions for Jeff? I have one. Um, will there be enough room on the website to, um, store historic information about homes, uh, surveyed in, uh, neighborhoods that have to do with, um, you know, the historic nature of the homes?
Um, are you talking about our, the surveys that we received from the Alice Novak's course in historic preservation?
No, other ones that, um, for example, um, I've done a survey of, um, a visual survey of all the homes in East Urbana, and I'd like to have a place on the website to, uh, archive them for future use. And I'm wondering if, um, would there be, will this, will there be space on the website for, um, like, 1,500 photographs of houses in Urbana?
Um, not with this phase, but we are hoping to build on it. So, in future phases, we'd like to be able to have people, um, be able to be more interactive and enter comic, comments and photos about properties that are shown in this, on the website.
Okay, thanks. Other comments or questions? Is there a proposal?
I move to send ordinance Number 2015-04-031 to City Council with recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, Erin Ammon seconded it. Discussion? Okay, uh, those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. That goes to City Council with approval. All right, we've done 16. We'll go down to number 17 on the agenda. Ordinance Number 2015-04-034, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for OMSAI LCC. And this is, um, a random mini-mart at 1701 Phila Road. And I think, Michael has a...
Good night. I'm gonna accuse myself. Good night.
Better than accusing yourself. Thank you, Michael. Smart man. Mayor, Mayor pressing.
Uh, this is just a request for a Class C liquor license. Maybe been, looks like a legitimate business, so I'd recommend approval. And the same with the next one.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion? Diane Marlin?
I move that we send ordinance Number 2015-04-034 to Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. And Erin seconded it. Other discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that carries. Lastly, ordinance Number 2015-04-035, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R1 liquor licenses. This is for Pam Pan Huang LLC, A1 Tune at 110 East University Avenue. Comments? Mayor, do you want to?
Same thing. It's a restaurant.
Same thing, jito, okay. It's a restaurant.
Is it change of ownership or a new restaurant?
You know, I'm going to have to tell you on Monday, because I spent all afternoon at the university, and I didn't ask that question, but I will ask it tomorrow.
Okay. Yes.
And I should have asked the same question about the previous one. Is this a new business?
You know, I'm going to have to answer you guys tomorrow, because I just don't know at this point.
That address looks kind of familiar, but I just don't know.
Yeah, I just wondered if it was a new convenience store.
There's somebody in the audience that knows.
Well, okay, apparently the owner is yours, so.
Aha.
Come up to the mic and edify us. And which, which location are you at, sir?
It's the one next to the Po Boi behind the Wendy's and the New Street Centers, and there. iTunes is a karaoke launch for Asian student, because U I U C has a lot of Chinese Asian students. What it does is like, it's kind of like a bar where people, it's not even like a bar, it's new where people go for singing like a song, but a lot of Asian cultures is different than American culture. American culture, when they go to karaoke, they do an open bar. Chinese culture, they more, with the families, they, they get a lot of friends for birthday parties and stuff, they will sing songs and then celebrate, and the room, which has a high speaker studio, which they can sing and stuff, party and play poker and stuff.
So it's time to have fun, isn't it?
Yes.
So are, are you a restaurant?
It's, we don't sell really, we don't, it's not really a place sell much of food, it's more like a place hanging out, social, making friends, some snacks and food and so on. So, in China, they sell a lot of food, because the market here is very different. We don't know what type of food that we were thinking for them, so we've probably got to think some basic simplified stuff. The one that's already opened, there's a one called K One, K One Karaoke by North Neil Street in Champaign. There's another one called The Voice, you guys probably never heard of it. It's also by East Green, the Green Street, it's also karaoke bar. What they sell is like some sort of Asian snacks, Asian food and packages and stuff, Asian drink, like ginger, ginger, ginger tea, green teas, some sort of like a tea product. There's a lot more tea product, different drink and stuff. People can sing, because when they get thirsty, they drink a little bit and so on. Yeah, it's very unique culture thing that, sorry.
So I was, I was just curious about this liquor license classification. Is that a restaurant?
Yes.
R one is a restaurant.
Yes, it's a restaurant. It's a restaurant. In China, it's, it's a full restaurant, but in here, we don't know, we don't know the food classifications on what it is, because in China, all of it is considered restaurants.
Do you have a kitchen there?
It's not kitchens. It's not kitchen-related, because most of the stuff that they sell is more like a snack preparation package of food.
So is this the appropriate license for this type of business, is my question?
Well, Jolinda picked that one, so I think she knows what she's doing, but I will certainly check into it.
Doesn't sound like a restaurant.
Okay, I'll check into it and we'll see if we-
Without the kitchen?
Yeah. So, we might have to change it if it's going to, before Monday, but I don't want to hold it up.
Send it with no-
Yeah, and we'll clarify it, okay?
And I'd also like to know if seventeen oh one Philo is a new convenience store?
Right. I'm going to check into both of these, because I looked at that and I was surprised.
Is the, is the owner of seventeen oh one Philo Road here? No? Okay. All right, so we have questions, but we can answer them by next week, apparently.
Yes.
Okay, well, okay, Bill Brown?
I'll move to send ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash zero four dash zero three five to council with no recommendation.
Second. Okay, Aaron Ammon second. All right, other discussion about that? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that's going to go to council without recommendation?
We're just going to make sure you have the right license, okay?
Yeah, we can, oh, yeah. And seeing no, no further business tonight, we are adjourned.